All right, Anton, when you are ready.
Recording in progress.
Uh, all right, uh, apologies for anybody in virtual land. We're starting a couple of minutes late here. But we will now call to order the January fifteenth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Trinidad Planet Commission. Start, please, the roll call with some changes. Sure, please.
Uh, Commissioner Slay.
I'm here.
Commissioner Paul.
President.
Commissioner Hakenin.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
You won.
You got it, you won.
Sir.
Commissioner Johnson, too. Well, what RF Johnson was your middle initial?
Yes.
S, R, S, okay.
So, yeah, don't look at the protocol, the city email is for that, but just for the record, we do have our new planning commissioner seated tonight and Tristan was reappointed last night by the city council, so and Roland has been sworn in also in the room is outgoing Commissioner Tom Hopkins. Um, before we get into things, I just wanted to thank Tom for his service. Uh, he joined the planning commission in twenty twenty. I think it was May. I've been told was your first meeting. Um, and I joined a few months after that, but I just wanted to say I'm definitely gonna miss you. Uh, I'm gonna miss your perspective. I'm gonna miss your, your, uh, constant, uh, voice reminding us of just being good, being good neighbors, being good people was always for me sometimes a welcome thing to hear when some of the stuff we got going round and round. Um, and you really offer for me a lot of unique perspective and sometimes that was what kind of helped me break through stuff. So just from me, I wanted to say thank you, and I believe the city council's planning a formal recognition at the February meeting of the city council coming up, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your service. You lucky guy, you get to leave whenever you want to tonight without ruining a core. I'm, we're all envious.
No guilt.
No guilt, yeah, please, no. Be obvious and be loud when you do it. I, I highly hope that you do. Um, all right, approval of the minutes, we have one set of minutes from November twentieth. Uh, all commissioners were present, uh, Roland, you'll need to abstain from voting on this if you weren't. Just any changes to the minutes from the November twentieth meeting that anyone would like to see made.
I'll have to pack up page five, page three of the draft minutes, which is a typo, says sand instead of hand, but that really only got my attention because there's a sentence that I sort of struggling with, the one that says, Slay noted, this is on Parker's to-do list.
Which paragraph, just to?
Sorry, the third from the bottom.
Thank you.
The last two sentences, sand, typo. That's slated this on purpose, so I don't doubt that it said that, but I also don't know what your to-do list is at any given point, so I don't, uh, also, I also
I don't, I, I wanna say that
Condition related?
It's definition related, but maybe that, that it was.
Maybe that's, oh, I think that you were referring to the recommended updates. Um, so last month, in addition to the safety element, there were the, um, recommended updates for the LCP. And so that definition was a recommendation to that's what you were referring to.
That seems, that, that rings a bell. I'm really great, I don't know what your to-do list is, given that. You're better than I guess.
Yes. Uh, yeah, actually an insane paragraph.
Oh, right, it's a hot paragraph.
Um, uh, there, there, in the middle, it says that, uh, aren't listed are, uh, electrical communication, including the antennas on Trinidad head. Um, I, I that's okay, but I think it might be a little bit more professional if we labeled that as what it really is, which is a I don't even know what the, the actual name is, but it's a, it's a research facility of some sort or whatever it's called, other than just the antennas, because there's more there than that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of infrastructure. I think they still have a diesel generator up there, et cetera, so.
It's a repeater for county radios and all, maybe there's something else. Coast Guard. There's a little, there's a little section on the head that's not within city technically, right?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
That, that's what I'm referring to, so, or whatever that might be called, just a, maybe a little bit better name than that.
I can just say facilities.
Sure.
Any other corrections?
We'll prove.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, this was zero. Uh, approval of tonight's agenda. Anybody want any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I think that was approved with unanimous consent. Taking it into the parliamentarian class I just took. Excellent, yes, things along faster. All right, we'll open it up now to items from the floor. Um, anybody on the public or online who says there appear to be anybody has a chance? Tom, if you had anything or you wanted to say, you're welcome to.
Yeah, I, okay, hi there, thank you for leaving me, just Tom Hopkins. And, uh, yeah, this sign, this signage we passed when I was at the trail committee meeting and I heard that there was a crosswalk coming in. I, uh, on the main street did not have a clue as to that there was gonna be electronic signs involved with the crosswalk. And I've since heard a lot of feedback from people and, um, just wanted to let you know that, that, uh, that we had a sign on it, and, uh, it's getting really rampant, signs that are going up very quick. And, uh, so, hey, that's making sense for everyone to tell people that, you know, so, thanks.
Appreciate it, thanks, Tom. Anything else? Nobody in virtual land? All right, then moving on to tonight's agenda. Moving off Trevor, agenda item number one.
So this is your monthly update on trail closures. Um, so Van Wick, uh, I guess this one can probably come off the agenda for the future, so, um, Van Wick is officially reopened, although the city's not gonna advertise it or, you know, put it out there as a trail. The, the, the railings were repaired and yet closure was allowed to expire and the closed sign was taken down and replaced with a sign that was that is, you know, what we feel is, you know, likely a short-term solution. Um, who knows how long the, the trail will last without needing, you know, really needing further repairs. Um, and so, so the city really needs to think about whether they wanna pursue further repairs or that's, that's for the long term. Um, but for the short, short term, we've got it reopened and, um, no CDP was necessary, so we kind of get out of that cycle of closures and appeals. So that's nice. Uh, Axolotl Memorial Trail, also some good news. Um, RCA did do the vegetation clearing, um, down, down on the new realignment. So we're, we're working on scheduling a site visit the old just, so take a look at that and see what kind of, um, additional studies might be required and, and gather some ideas for some short-term repairs to get that trail reopened by next summer. And then also we are, the city is working with the management team on, um, planning some grant funding. Implement the plan for the long-term plan for the trail that was in GHD's recommended report. Um, as well as we're hoping to include some related studies and improvements related to the coastal resiliency program as well, so. So that was, that resiliency plan was funded as a planning grant from OPC, Ocean Protection Council, and so now they have implementation grants available, and so they they want to give the city more money to, to implement projects in that, so. So we're working on figuring out a project description.
I have a question, too soon.
Nope, not at all.
The who is the lead on the Axolotl Trail?
It'd be the city, um, but anything within that area, the tri-city area really requires approval of various parties, including the ancestral society in Ranchea. And so that's why we're working with the management team on that grant.
Between the city, is it the city council staff primarily lead on that, or is that something that's commissioned?
Um.
Active role?
You know, this is, I would say it's, it's at the staff level right now. Um, certainly the planning commission has made it clear that they want that trail open as soon as possible. I think the, the, and sent that message to the city council, and the city council has agreed and has directed staff to work towards that end.
Uh, with regard to the grant applications for the more long-term plan that was presented by TIS, um, is the TNT and the city through all this planning process that's gonna happen to, say, try and buy the funding, sort of formalize the design? Will there be any avenue for public input on the design, or is it like, we're sticking to that GHD report, that's kinda? Or like, what's the appetite for the TIS for some, for that?
Not. I just imagine, you know, they, they think that, that mostly should be kept within the management team, however, there has to be some public process somewhere, you know, I think, uh, applying for the grant, um, will be on a city council agenda at some point. Um, the, the management team does want the city reporting out from, from the meetings a little bit more and have that more formally on, on the, uh, agendas. Um, so that would be a point where it can be discussed. Um, so I think it will be, it will be on council agendas, um. You know, more as presenting, here's the plan, and then getting public input, and then the management team. At, at least at the initial stages.
I guess I, yeah, just wanted to make sure that there would somehow be before, like, came to us with, like, a fully bludgeoned product.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we don't wanna revisit the Van Wick trail.
Right.
Obviously, the net will at some point come to us, designing, CDP permitting, all that stuff, so it goes through all of that, right?
I mean, that's a, it's a big project and, um, you know, there's gonna be quite a few studies and, you know.
Questions on this update?
Well, I guess I'll, I'll just voice my opinion. Um, I appreciate the fact that, at least for the time being, the Van Wick trail is open, and the issue is closed, but I, I think it still would be useful on a periodic basis to at least understand that, you know, as you pointed out, there may be some long-term issues that still have to be resolved. And it might be useful to, at least for us, to maybe, uh, keep ahead, keep ahead of the the, the pack on what some of that stuff might be, if nothing else, to tell us that oh, there's a strong possibility that with rains, the, this winter, that the trail has to be closed again to go through another uh, ra- round of, um, quest for CDPs, et cetera. So I, I don't know, I just feel like it, we don't need to see it every month, but perhaps on a regular basis, we ought to understand what's going on.
I like that. Would it work? I would love to clean up, you know, one less alphabet there. Would it work to just kind of direct Trevor that that be part of your staff report as there's things worse?
Yeah, I mean.
That's, that's, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I.
Absolutely, so I can continue to, you know, I can just say no changes if there's no changes.
Yeah, I, I don't want it to be a big deal, but I think we just should be aware of the issue.
Yeah, cause otherwise it's gonna fall off the radar and then the trail's gonna fall off the cliff and then.
Yeah.
I'd like to say something about that, too, because it seems to me that these trails are, are two of the things in this city that are the most subject to land failure, lands and sites of different kinds. I mean, if you wanna pick a couple of spots that are really in the gun barrel, there you've got, you've got Axolotl Trail, bottom third, then you've got Van Wick. Everybody values those trails, they're you know, it's like ever, never land all the time, that's what, what you do, so it's a prime example of where we need to begin with coastal instability issues, those things that are actually, you know, resources in the city.
Yeah. Absolutely, and, and that's part of, we've talked a little bit about that as part of the LCP update, um. You know, and it gets, it gets a little bit more complex because there's cultural resources involved as well, um, so, yeah, it's, it's a complicated issues.
I missed the city council meeting where, um, Sarah Lindgren presented the new design for, or conceptual design for that, so, but I did finally watch that recording of her presentation, and I just, uh, I think she brought up a really good point that like dating back to whatever, the eighties, the cities. Like, cities like very minimal to no maintenance of these trails, and I think that's my experience, just back to the eighties, but is true, and I think so many of these issues that we're having could be dealt with by just doing, like, annual or whatever, quarterly, just like little touches that maintain the trail and keep them from having these catastrophic failures. Or like, keep them from just slips, going down the slippery slope, becoming just worse, worse and worse. So I would encourage city staff, which, to maintain, in this case, the Van Wick Trail in its current state, so that, hey, later this winter, should we get a lot more rain or something, maybe we have so I, I guess I just really wanna highlight me as I can report part of my trails. And it's, I think Sarah, Sarah's point was like, look, this trail's been here in its current state since the eighties, and city doesn't maintain it, so I want this big giant engineer thing, super perfect. And like, I guess I, I, I can understand where she's coming from. It's like, yeah, tired of things slowly failing all the time, so let's go with a big engineer solution, but I, in my personal opinion, I just wish that city could be better at maintaining these things, so we didn't have to go there.
I do wanna step back for a second and apologize. Our new city manager is with us, uh, and obviously, Joe, at any point, you're welcome to add to the discussion. I know you're still getting up to speed on a lot of stuff, but I know you're diving in deep, so feel free at any time, obviously, to come forward and, if you have input.
I think I'll sit there for a while.
Okay, fair enough, but I apologize that I
I appreciate that.
To run through the room, so if you haven't had a chance to meet him, please do it tonight. Anything else on the trail update? Right, with that, then we will move on to item number two. Could be a really short one, the, uh, concise and, uh, take the L, Trevor.
Great, so, um, you know, we took a, a, just a high-level review at the last meeting. I got some good comments regarding sort of organization. And I give a shout out to Tristan and, and Richard for submitting, um, the comments document itself. Um, so I did a lot of reorganization, uh, moved things around. I think it does flow better and make more sense. I didn't start changing numbering or things like that. Um, but hopefully it's at a point that, um, we're ready to start looking at it in, in more detail and appear satisfied with the outline. Uh, I also wanna get the copy to, to coastal commission staff sooner rather than later, so maybe after, after this meeting I'll be able to do that. Um, I do need to still work on figures for this document, um, and again, I haven't spent a lot of time on section D, which is, which is not part of the LCP. LCP this time. Um, in addition, the, some of the city's other sort of emergency response documents are a bit out of date. And so I'm, I'm hoping that those are gonna be, um, updated soon. I know the local hazard counties were, no. That's how it works. Um, there has been some talk about updating the urgency operations plan as well, which would be really helpful for this document. Um, but I know some of you are involved and, and it's, it's not emergency response isn't a big, um, planning issue that I'm normally in, involved in in terms of police and fire and CERT. And some, some of you who are more involved, if you do take a stab at, at writing up some, some information, um, that would be good. I have collected some, I have started collecting policies that I've seen in, in other safety elements as I review them, but I think we just for Trinidad, um, otherwise it's probably gonna fall and be able to, to write some of these sections, so.
All right, thanks, Trevor. Um, so it's fifty pages, this, this particular section, and so I kinda wanna suggest maybe that we start with if there are kind of high-level observations and comments that each of us had as we read through it, and then if we want to at this meeting, we think it's meaningful get deeper into the weeds with that, or if it's better, if you get enough out of that, Trevor, then maybe we could all commit to actually submit comments, which I'm guilty of, I'm not doing, and then see this again the next time. Does that sound like a reasonable approach? Yeah, okay, like, all right, so kind of just general thirty thousand foot comments, I guess, that anybody has on it.
Except, uh, yeah, my thorough comment, um, um, but this whole document covers more than just the city, it should be for the entire planning area. Is that correct? Or just parts of it are for the entire planning area?
It's primarily, it's primarily for the city, um, but just for context would include the, the plan. Uh, it goes all the way from Scotty's Point to Driver Road, River Water Ship.
Yeah, I guess I, I bring that up because some of the sections are very hyper-focused city of Trinidad, but other sections broader, like we're talking about the West Haven water supply, stuff like that. I think maybe that's relevant because of, like, wildfires, if you want to have, or?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, the two systems are, are close together, they're major water systems in the area and will be intertied together, so there is and, and mutual, with mutual aid, one service comes to the other in terms of fire fighting and that sort of thing. So I think, I think those are relevant. Um, you know, a lot of disaster and safety issue is not gonna just happen in Trinidad, it's, it's general, so I think that's, that's the purpose, but if, um, but if you have specific areas where you think something does something. You know, one of your comments was like, um, you know, fire and the cat fire regimes in the county or snowmelt or things like that, um. Yeah, I mean, it's not really specific to, to Trinidad, it's more, you know, fires east of Trinidad, affect air quality, it's probably the primary issue.
Okay, but I, uh, I mean, no, that's fine, well, it makes sense. Uh, I guess I just wasn't sure if we then needed to, like, have a broader discussion of, like, landslides along the flaps going all the way down, it's gonna drag all the way north and discuss, you know, all of us, the whole shoreline dynamic is great. You know, we're only talking about the shoreline of Trinidad, which I think is fine, too, but I just thought that we were, you know, we're really focused here on that topic, but and more broadly.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point. I think part of that is because we have the information that's specific to Trinidad for that, and we don't always have information that's specific to Trinidad for, for some of the other issues. Um, but certainly landslides north and south of Trinidad can affect transportation to, to, from Trinidad. So, so it would be a safety issue.
But, yeah, I guess for like a like a valid standpoint, you know.
No, we could, I mean, the city could have policies for, you know, making recommendations to the county in the planning area.
I guess who else would?
Yeah. The, the city has a stake in that, so, yeah, and that's, that's the purpose of a planning area, so the area of the county that affects the city, and so so when, when there's projects in the county, um, the county's updating its land use documents, that would be sort of the basis for the city finding comments.
I'll make some real fast, um, just, just, just a follow-up of what you said, uh, Tristan. It, it wasn't clear to me that we were talking about sphere of influence versus planning area. And, uh, in one area, and, and then in some areas, we talk about geographic boundaries. Uh, but in some areas, we, we talk about different, it, it seems like we're defining the, the area in slightly different terms, so, might take a look at that. Uh, I will say it's a lot easier to read this time than it was first time, very definitely, so that's really great. Um, I did a little bit of background, and this is fifty-three pages long. Our land use element, which I would have expected to be huge, is thirty pages long. And so I, I, I guess my, the, the point I'm trying to make is I still feel that there's a lot of redundancy, particularly when it comes to, uh, issues related to uh, seismic and geological hazards and how, you know, we go through each one of those, and that's fine, and then we do shoreline hazards, and it seems to me that there might be a way in which we could maybe combine some of those, because when you look at the, the actual, uh, goals and policies, they're very similar. And in some cases, I would say, well, that's exactly what we said two pages ago or three pages ago, so I don't, I don't see that as maybe, I, I, I see it as maybe something that we could refine a little bit, now that we have an expert on the planning commission when it comes to geological stuff, uh, I'm sure this will really get cleaned up.
Well, I mean, I took a brief run through it, obviously, the time to, to, to do any comment, but I like to say, if you start talking about shoreline issues I'm sorry, or geological hazards of shoreline. You know, we're, we're made.
If you could combine and some.
I can't even think of a landslide that ever happened on Trinidad that wasn't on one of the flubs. As an example. Something you just done, something stupid, you know, man, say, problem.
Right.
Apart from natural hazards. It's seismic, it's that's another can of worms. Because what are, what are we doing about seismic risk? Not like we had or a structure or staying where it's planted, so. You have one-story firehouses and one-story what else, what else is there for, for, I mean, you got the water facilities and things, but and you, um, it's specific about do you have a separate issue, though, that? Do you have a separate issue though, that? With the fault rupture hazard zone, which is pretty unique. All the way up to have that kind of feature.
Yeah, so I, I, I think. At least in my mind. There's just a summarization that we can do and maybe some combination that might help us and still get the same set of policies that we need to address the issues. Once again, uh, and I'll say this again. There are tons of programs in here. And maybe we need them. And it's just like, we are inundated with, with programs for each of these elements. And I just have a hard time believing that we have the staff or the resources to be able to accommodate some of these. The, the other thing along with that is that. You turn down the. Got a little bit of feedback over here. Uh, glossary issues as well. I know we've talked about that in the past. And there's a lot of places where the first time that an acronym is used, it's not defined, but it may be defined later on. And or maybe, I don't remember if we decided that we were gonna put a glossary for each element, or are we gonna have a?
We have one big glossary. Which is part of the problem, but you know, this element in particular might be one where we want glossary in it. We can revisit that. And at least for now, I can put the terms in. In the element.
Um, and then. And, and this is a nit. But for the public. It was very difficult to follow this in black and white. And of course, if you're looking online, it's fine. And if you're able to reproduce it in color, it's great, but. Uh, it was very difficult to track some of the. The changes and even some of the figures don't come out right. Uh, in black and white. So it's just, you know, a nit. But. I, I, I like the, the format much better than it was before. So those are kind of top level comments.
And. As far as the policies themselves go, a lot of them seem directed towards property owners. There's other types of applicants and I think that there's. Maybe disproportionately. Few things that the city is responsible for in the document tray. Like I think that, um. I mean, obviously the first item, the first policy listed is hazard mapping, but there's. Not mentioned elsewhere of the extent to which monitoring of these very. Dynamics, slopes, flaps, and beaches and whatnot. Should be happening in any sense to which the city should be responsible for that. I think that there is, there's other issues like that where the city could take a more active role. Resolving some of these things, like another example that affects me is the. In the tsunami section. Yeah, the state of district care of the, of the body or whatever was mentioned, but then. The action added which suggests that, you know, equipment should be made in change in the best extent possible.
She's disrepair what?
Uh, the tsunami warning, I guess it's. And a stoke. But it is, it is very disrepair. I think that ma- maintaining that sort of stuff is useful in terms of achieving some of the goals of the. The image itself. So I think that, I, like I say, I think that there's. A set of property owners are tasked with. The city should be tasked with people.
Mentioned the water drain, I, I just breeze into it. I noticed a couple of places they, they. Watch and show lines and. Yeah, and things like that are going, is that a requirement of some other entity? Because. Not gonna do that without spending serious money if it's gonna be meaningful at all.
Yeah, so one of the things that was a little bit difficult with this, that I mentioned the last meeting, but, but you didn't hear, is that. The, the requirements for safety elements have changed a lot and the coastal commission and. Local jurisdictions have not been in agreement on how to address sea level rise in. Particularly coastal erosion. And so. I found only two safety elements that have actually recently been certified by the coastal commission. So there's not a lot of examples out there. So a lot of these are taken directly from. Island Bay. This was the one that I found that was most relevant to Trinidad. So, you know, a lot of these, I think, and this is a reason I want to get it in the coastal commission staff's hands for review soon. Is because I want to get their. Input on it. And, you know, the coastal commission does put the responsibility for, you know, a lot of things on development and developers. It's, it's private property. It's, you know. That's where the value is and, you know, it's not the city's value. It's. It's a property owner. So the coastal commission does put a lot of that responsibility on property owners. But a lot of things seem pretty onerous. I mean, in here, in terms of shoreline management plans and. The thing, and I, I haven't spent a lot of time going through the, the policies in, in detail to try and. To Trinidad. I just wanted to get the. The format and the meat of it to, together. So we can. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of. There's a lot of pretty onerous things in here, but I'm, I, my impression is that's what the coastal commission's.
Looking at the. Yes, can be one on page twenty-three. You don't necessarily need to flip through it, but. The evaluation which requires many things, I didn't say through Jake. It's, it's pretty onerous and it seems in some ways that. A type of stuff might be redundant to the type of data and monitoring that other entities are actively doing. So it's sort of pository if that's where information is, people can reference that. It's not the city's responsibility, but again. There's a lot of monitoring going on. It's not seem to follow the lapses.
It's gonna be more efficient if it was done.
I had a couple of things. I, I too have a lot of margin notes about, there's a lot of, you know, repetition, which is understanding of the drafting and cutting and pasting. And I'm wondering if a potential way, in, in particular, that jumped out at me going through the hazard section as you've got it built out now. Uh, where we just kind of say the same thing about this particular hazard, then we go to the next hazard class, say that same thing about the next hazard class, say the same thing about each hazard class. So I didn't know if there was a way kind of with that general section to say. These issues are common to all hazard classes. And then as we get to a specific hazard class, if there's something different, unique to that one, we can speak to that, you know, seismology. Um, those types of things. And that might be, and I know it's another reformatting that you have to do, but I thought that might be a way to clean that up.
Yes, I think that's a good point. I think I moved a couple of things into more general, but yeah, I'm sure there's more that can be done with.
I've written a lot of notes I can send your way with that, okay. And then I, I had a, I was struggling with the appropriate level of detail. Um, and information to put in here, you know, I mean. The scientist in me loves the deep dive and the detail and those types of things, but. If anybody was unclear on the Franciscan complex and the Melange and those things, it's in here at, at least a half a dozen times. So again, you know, so there's opportunities to really kind of. And I don't know what the balance is between what level of detail, when we get to some of the stuff on, you know, climate change and rainfall and sea level rise and those things. What level of detail we have to put in here, recognizing what is the intent of this element in our general plan to really do to give somebody a, a general idea? And that can be found elsewhere in policy or. That was another comment I had on that. And then the last, and it kind of might relate to that is. How much are we allowed to refer to other documents? And there was some stuff in here, I think it was SB two seventy-two or something, but then we talked about the community coastal resiliency plan. And I didn't know if some of what. That SB, is it two seventy-two, I think? It's, the number's in here.
First, the vulnerability assessment?
Yeah, I think so. But I didn't know, are there aspects of that that are already covered in that? Can we, you know, can we refer to other documents and then not have to? Put it in detail here, then kind of making it a little bit more evergreen, a little bit less likely to. Change it in one place and forget to change it in the other. The temperament of the coastal commission, if there are, how much you can, I can't say, see this other document.
Well, we do have to be careful. Yes, I think the resiliency plan would qualify for the required vulnerability assessment. We do have to be careful about just incorporating documents by reference because then that becomes, then they're certified to you by the coastal commission. So we just have to strategize on, on how we approach that. But certainly we can refer to other documents. Yeah, I think. We want to include enough information so that people don't have to go find another document to go look stuff up. I mean, they don't want to have to, you know, it'd be nice if it was all in one document they can. But it, it only needs to be enough to provide context for those.
Seems that you have different users. That if you're trying to cover everything. With the, and, and I'm thinking, you have like the city that has responsibility for infrastructure, a bunch of things. And then you have, you know, private landowners. And if those two users. Need way different kinds of information, it seems to be. And that, I know what. Before, not this kind of way. When back in the year, county to do with June. Something from the eighties. And I got into that. And Roy, they did get confused with the same thing, you know. Who are you, who are you describing these issues to? Then people who needed to. Deal with certain regulations, like. You're developing a piece of ground. I mean, there's a whole list of things you have to go through. But. He isn't. Doing this. That kind of development. You got your infrastructure.
I think in terms of the text, um, we want to primarily focus on making it understandable to the public. Um, because city staff can always, you know, for us, it's easier to go to those reference documents and find background information. In terms of the policies, though, it would need to apply to both.
And I think. Also. When we turn these into ordinances. That it becomes a little bit more clear as to who's responsible for specifics.
Oh, yeah.
And we're a long way from that, unfortunately, but that's, that I think in my mind at least helps clarify some of that. Those gray area policies of who's responsible, because when we do the ordinance, then it, to me, it becomes a little bit more clear.
But maybe some of those things like requiring, you know, the hundred foot setback and the. In the design life of the structure and all those things, maybe. Could, could go into.
Well, I'm sure they will, yeah.
Instead of being in here. Generally, let's say. You have certain requirements you're gonna have to. Can't just go out and, you gotta do certain studies first because of the conditions.
Yeah, and, and general plans usually are supposed to be general. Um, for the coastal part of it, though, it's, the standards are a little bit different. We have to get a little bit more specific, but. Yeah, you know, I, I think. I did notice that, you know, it's just set the life of the structure, but I think the life of a structure should be dependent on. Type of structure. It's different structures, you're gonna have different lives. Setback is, yeah, I think it's. Hundred feet or. Still for the life of the project.
Area of influence.
Yeah.
If you want to get into. Just to, to coastal level treatment. You know, about your ways, it gets really complicated. And it, and it doesn't belong. Here, we could get a painting somewhere. Like you say. Certain things that are quantifiable. Maybe it goes there, but. We in our arms are a lot. Can't get site specific. Different point. Most of those days are site specific. I'm beginning to sift, but.
No, it does. We don't want to set. You know, specific standards in the general plan when it should really be based on a site specific stuff.
Yeah, echo. I felt like there was definitely some stuff in here that is covered already in some of the ordinances that we've seen. You know, could pull. The standards and requirements and things like that.
And general thoughts. I've got, I've got some concerns. I think Richard brought these up there last time. There's so many intervals at which things must be done. And they don't seem to sync up, right? There's five intervals, eight intervals, ten intervals. I'm just wondering, I don't think there's any way we can. It'd be nice to. Streamline those a little bit since they are done. At least a bit more in sync with one another. If they're gonna get done at all. I'm assuming it's that.
It's probably. Start with a list of what the intervals are existing, right? See if we can.
Well, I mean, even ten years.
Well, then. As I said before, uh, I just don't think we have the, the, the infrastructure where we're involved to do some of this stuff. I mean, when you look through here, there's things that have to be done every five years. There are things that have to be done every ten years. Um, who's even tracking that on a schedule anywhere, you know? And, and the coastal, this is the. The, oh, the SB seventy, uh, two seventy-two. Well, we don't have to do that until two thousand thirty-four. So, you know.
Well, or on the national C P update.
So I'm just, I'm, I'm just going by what's in the policy right here.
Yeah, but if we're updating our LCP, it's gonna be required. And I, you know, I think. One of the reasons. One of the reasons for these specific policies is because the coastal commission's pushing for this idea of managed retreat. And so they want a plan for retreat. And if you're not gonna do that, then they want. These timelines and these, so, okay, in ten years, you're gonna do this and, you know, every five years, you're gonna do this. So as opposed to saying, you know, okay, well, we're gonna start moving houses or whatever it is. This is the solution, this is the compromise to say, well, we'll monitor it. And in ten years, we'll check back in and see if we need to do it.
I'm sorry, but. When they talk about retreat and some evaluation of that. I mean, what to? What's out there that can be retrieved?
That's right.
See, because we don't have, we don't have houses right above the beach. Right? Anywhere. Everything is up. On the bluff top somewhere. There's no struck, well, I guess there's, I can think of one example. It's, it's there. You know, what we used to call Indian Beach. I'm sorry. And I don't know who's, who's down there now. That one house that's down low, it's in the middle of the shoreline. But other than that. There's, there's not. It may be. You know, Trump's place up there. Westgate. But other than that. There are no houses down there. The only infrastructure is the stuff around the harbor.
But it, but it is the bluff retreat too. So I, and, and that's, I mean, and that's why there's no recent safety element.
There's no connection between the time of sea level rise and any action getting to the top of the bluff.
No, well, we don't even know when. I mean, we don't even really know when sea level is. So it's all. And, but I think the coastal commission and they have been butting heads with local jurisdictions for at least ten years. It's a huge issue. And, um, and that's why there haven't been safety elements because coastal commission's saying. We just want you to start planning for retreat. And cities are like. We have nowhere to go. We can't do that.
Have they outlined what that means? Does that mean in their, in their mind, does that mean we begin contacting the property owners that are on the bluff and could eventually, or? Will eventually at some point. I mean, is that their intent or do you have any idea? It's, it's hard to.
I mean, it's certainly, it's easier to envision in other, in some locations than others, you know, I think. I mean, it's certainly, it's easier to envision in other, in some locations than others, you know, I think. You know, in the, in the coastal resiliency plan, we sort of have a conceptual retreat idea for Edwards. Here between Ocean and Hector, um, you know, creating one, one lane road, that sort of thing. Um, but that's, that's to a point, um, but again, we can't, we can't really plan further than that. Because we don't know the, and you know, that might not happen for fifty years and who knows what the conditions or technology are gonna be in fifty years. So it doesn't make sense to sort of, um, you know, there's, there are, you know, I think they like things like, um. You know, Big Lagoon, where they have the, you know, sort of rolling easements as the bluff retreats, then the house gets moved back behind everybody else and kind of.
There's nothing else like that.
There's not, I know, you can't do that.
Up there where no, nobody owns the property they're sitting on. Yeah, I remember back in the day when they were having major retreat, I mean, my company, we're out there doing new, new septic systems. Because there's a, there's a house there that's near and they say, you are now gonna move. In the corporation, we tell them where that's gonna go and they pick up the house and they go set it on a new foundation. And the only limiting thing was, well, they have to be some kind of a septic system, because that needs to be replaced. But the fact that all the land is owned by one entity, there's nothing else like that, right?
No, and and again, that's why they haven't come up with any real good solutions for this. It's a, you know, the, the coastal commission, they do have a, you know, the coastal cities, um. They have a couple of, like subcommittees where, um. Staff works, coastal commission staff are working with, um, representatives from, from various coastal cities to try and come up with solutions. And I mean, the last time I watched one, I think they present quarterly to the coastal commission, the unions and last one in September. Something, um, you know, they, they, the coastal commission staff presented what they thought was a really good compromise. And it sounded reasonable and then coast, the coastal commission was like, no, it's not.
So it's, it's just a test case or he lets somebody else trash it out.
I mean, the, the option is we just stick with our old general, but I mean, it's not working very well. So that, you know, we're kind of stuck in, in, we're kind of stuck. Um, because we can't, we can't just keep using our old general plan, um.
I hear you though, say that, uh, uh, midway point on this would be to put language in that we will monitor in ten years. And that kind of allows us to continue as we are while we see what shakes out.
I, yeah, I think that's really the.
Beyond that, I don't have a solution.
We can go is, is, yeah, do some monitoring, um, you know, and I think we're gonna have to be really careful. I think from, you know, coastal development permits anywhere near the coast are gonna get a lot more onerous. Um, but it's not necessarily that you can't develop, but you're gonna have to recognize, and that's what they're doing with individual development permits is. Okay, you have to monitor the bluff if it gets within so many feet of a house, or what, then you have to do this or that. Um, so they're kind of doing managed retreat on an individual coastal development permit basis now, um. So I, you know, it's. So to the extent we can, yes, that would be the solution, is just kind of monitor and in ten years, nothing's happened and. Whatever it is.
Do you have to say how you're gonna monitor?
Pro- probably and, you know, maybe submit five year reports or something to the coastal commission or. As part of any new coastal development permit, yes, you can, um, in terms of existing development that. Isn't getting a permit, um, you, you can't.
This is why people are tearing down old places, building new on that exact footprint, so that they don't have to do this.
Yes, but if you, you have to keep fifty percent of your walls and foundation, otherwise it's new development, it's not right.
Right, so that's what. That works.
Um, if it works, we can take a break and open for public comment. I do see that one member of the public has joined online. See Marilyn Sterling, if you have any comments on the general plan update, safety element, now would be the, the time, or anybody else in the room? Seeing any unmuting or hands up in the room, we can bring it back to us then. Um, do you feel like you have what you need, Trevor, to unfortunately take another stab? I know you're anxious to get this in the hands of the coastal commission.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly keep working on it, like I said, I, I wanted to start getting this to, in front of you and start getting some input. You know, I haven't been through it in as much detail as Marlon probably would before getting it to you. Um, so, yeah, there's more work I'm gonna do just myself. I just wanna keep making progress on it, so keep keeping it in front of you, so, yeah, I think you're working on it. Well, no, we don't have a specific deadline, we've already passed our grant deadlines, but they're not, you know, they're soft deadlines. But as far as I know, the end of this year is a hard deadline to spend our grant money.
We have a brand for staff to update this plan.
Yes.
That should be real good.
Yes.
Rather than money to pay staff to continue.
Um, any other general or specific comments from the commissioners? If not, then I think we can move on.
Um, I mean, I guess I have like, well, I have a handful of rather specific comments, but I don't know that we. Need to go into all of them, but. Um, circling back to the managed retreat. Idea, so in, in here on back to page fifty-six, there's the property protection plan. Uh, which is like pretty darn onerous, um. And like, I guess maybe presumptuous, as was my takeaway, it's like. Like the first item A in there is like provide an estimate of when the structure will be permanently or maybe permanently unstable. And say, it's like, how, like, such as, you know, a stab in the dark. It's sort of sounds like when you throw that out there, it's like sort of putting a timeline that's. On your project that's so. Difficult to actually. I mean, obviously you hire whoever licensed professional to come up with that, but. It feels like that's kind of like a binding thing or like. I don't, you know, who, I don't know why someone should be required to put that stain on their property of like, oh, well, this house is only gonna be good for. Four years per this study, when it actually might be good for eighty years before it falls into the ocean. And I guess part of it, which to your comments that you had there, Trevor, um. I mean, the way it's sort of written, it's like any CDP. Required list, if the, if the structure is, is within. Those parameters or, you know, so it's like, okay, yeah, they want. This vegetation made. They get signed up to do this property protection plan, you know, I don't know, it just seemed a little, I mean, I. You know, like you're saying, the coastal commission has very onerous requirements, but, um. I guess that one stood out to me is. As, I, I was just like, maybe can we just like eliminate that whole section, probably not, but.
Maybe, I mean, sure, I, I struggled with that one too and I didn't fully understand it. I wanted, I, you know, I, I think a lot of this stuff is too much for Trinidad and I think we need to, to pare it down. But I want, I didn't want to necessarily do that myself, I wanted you guys to, to see this stuff, um. That, that, like I said, Half, Half Moon Bay, um, recently came out with. And I, I struggled with understanding this, because it says, oh, property owner can just elect to do it. And I think, well, why would you elect to do this? Um, and so there, it must provide some sort of assurance or, or something for the future. Um, you know, relieve some uncertainties about what might be required in the future. So you're, you do this plan and you're sort of guaranteed to. To do that, I, I'm not, I'm not, I struggled with that one as well, I don't fully understand that.
Yeah, well, I'd be happy to just eliminate it, I guess, since you did just highlight that it's voluntary, so.
Well, it says shall as, as part of any CDP, but it also says for a property owner. So I thought, well, what's the advantage? Why would someone want to do that?
Right.
Well, they might want to, if they're selling it, want to establish the value, you know, and say, well, all you need to do is. Just plan and you maintain your value, you can come up with reasons.
Yeah, have some sort of, yeah, I'm saying certainty.
Maintain, you know, property value.
Or, yeah, or I guess it could be like insurance thing.
Yeah, they could do that on their own, but two, we demand it right provided in here. Yeah, I, that section, you know, when I read it, um, I started trying to think in my head, how many structures already meet these criteria in town? Within a hundred feet of a bluff edge or, you know, I mean, I think there's, there's a few in my mind that I could think right now.
And they have nowhere to go.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so I, I kind of like the next section incremental removal, I thought was a much softer. Um, touch to kind of hit the same thing, it just talks in general concepts. When there becomes an issue such as stability, inability to deliver essential services, those types of things, then. These things should be dealt with and I think that is really appropriate for us, because that just puts it off people's radar, but doesn't do anything. Hard and fast and official and. Literally triggering, you know, um, by a certain metric, you know, because a hundred feet may be meaningful or may not be meaningful depending upon the underlying structure and. You know.
And the geology or.
You know, it's, I'm just gonna say, the sort of thing is, if somebody has valuable structure on. Personal property and they are starting to be threatened by slope failure. Then most people can't retreat, you know, it's, it's, it's rare, happy that, that they'll be able to do it a few places. But they're gonna want to put structures in, they're gonna say, okay, it's coming for us. And now we're going to hire an engineer and all that and come up with a stabilization structure of some kind. This might. Need to know that that's gonna go through a required review process, not just city building problem. Coastal commission is gonna have a lot to say about those kinds of things.
Yeah, maybe that's where you have a little bit advantage of certainty, because if you get preapproval, at least conceptually, if you're doing something like that. Because of course the coastal commission does not want shoreline protection structures.
Right, but they, that doesn't mean that they won't accept bluff top, they would raise the structure.
No, but e- even that, um, they have some issues with because it affects, um, demand supply and. That sort of thing, but, but I think they would accept, um, a bluff top structure on a time, you know, on a. On a limited time, timeline basis. Like, uh, you know, as an interim measure, um, you know, like you could shore up your house. For ten years until you figure out some other solution or something.
So I'm just thinking, th- these are mostly, you know, obviously when people have movement right at their house, they're gonna underpin it or something like that. But if you've got something that's approaching you, and I've had clients like that, and they say, I got boomers. And get nervous about it, what do you do? Well, you let nature take its course, which is erratic and unpredictable, or you do something definitive. Yeah, you have to go through the paces, um, it's easier to do if you're away from the coast, but. Still, it happens in the coastal zones as well. Maybe just these kinds of things just belong to, I don't know, the end or something like that, if you have trouble, here's what you're ready for this. Rather than it being in the general document.
Yeah, that might make sense. And, you know, maybe. Um, differentiating policies for new development versus existing development might be.
And maybe that's what you're saying, if you want to do a new development, you know, go with this set of rules here at the back. You gotta, if you, if you're talking about risk of something that's already there, it can be more gen- more generic.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I was just thinking it might be useful, I, I don't know if it's useful, but, uh, I would love to see the policies of, um. Uh, Rancho Palos and Portuguese Band. Because they're facing this in spades with, uh, uh, land movement and cutting off utilities and houses. Literally, uh, needing to be moved from the bluff. And I'm sure they must have some sort of, uh, set of policies on how they approach that, not that people gather much from it, but it might be interesting. They have to say.
Um, yeah, well, and, um, Pacifica.
Yeah.
Is another one, um, and I know Pacifica is pushing back against the coastal commission, really are. So I, you know, I think for those things, they're, what they're dealing with, you know, they're doing, dealing with it on a more individual basis. And they're not updating their LCPs because they're not gonna come to any. And I know, you know, I think Pacifica was trying to update its LCP, I don't, still is, but, you know, they just, they could not. Come to any agreement with the coastal.
Can, can you ask at your next meeting with coastal commission staff? What is their recommended solution, of course, when there is no room for managed retreat? I mean, the house is already twenty feet from the setback. You know, uh, which is the vast majority of our bluff facing properties in town. There are a few, I think there's a few at Edwards that have the property to retreat their building for some length of time, the rest of them are pretty much right upon the edge of the bluff. Uh, as you get up, you know, particularly the south facing bluff above the study area. I would just be curious if they have an answer to that, because that's the reality that we're all facing, right? As we're trying to comply with their requests and their guidelines, they want us to develop a plan for managed retreat, but there's no room to manage the retreat.
So. My understanding would be, so, you know, if, if the house predates the coastal act. Which, and even that, they can't even necessarily agree on what is the start date for that, but, um. Then you have. Some, some more rights to build a protective structure. So, um, because the coastal act says you can do shoreline protection structures for your existing structure. So they've interpreted that to predate the coastal act, um, so that's, that's a significant cutoff. Um, otherwise, I think they just say, okay, well, when the house becomes unstable, it's.
Abandoned.
Red tag and abandoned and you got your life, you know, you got your investment out of it, it was hammered twice. You know, I think you just have to, you're taking that risk.
Yeah, since you use that term risk, may I ask a question I should have asked earlier, um. For page four, uh, language that I assume appears in government section is five, three or two about unreasonable risks. And what an invisible risk is, the implication of there is reasonable risk? Because, I mean, it seems to me that building a residence on the bluff top, you are subjecting yourself to reasonable risks. So I'm wondering what's, what's the specific term.
Okay, we'll see if there's a definition, um. Yeah, I mean, I think it's sort of the idea of, you know, like defensible space where you're, you have your defensible fa- space, you meet those requirements. You're reducing the risk of fire, but you're not gonna eliminate it.
You know, this, they're tying that to the community. You know, this, they're tying that to the community. Well, if the same thing he's talking about protections of the community from any unreasonable risks. Right? Individual home. Isn't the community.
True, so am I just, and so maybe the city, maybe the city defines what unreasonable risks do.
Well, you, and you. You, you could from public, but. You can't do that to a personal private property. It'd be amazing, some of the risks people would take. I literally have a client. Who are backup people do. Where the guy was wanting to buy a piece of property and it was. Actively failing. And there's, you know, get into the house and say, you. Design like setback is like eighty feet, okay, and then, and the property is only ninety feet deep. So it's like, that would be the end of it. You know, and the guy says, well, if I only want. If I was willing to do, to build here and get it ten years out of it, I'd be happy with it. And it was like. Who would have thought? And at the same time, they went to the county, the county based, they said, you need to have. Deed restriction that, you know, as soon as it. You know, you get failure within, you know. Where the house is imminent, they're ready to fall down the bluff, you must pay to tear it down and remove it. And that was on his deed, so it passed on some of it. Real, no, I mean, it was like.
But I think that's where these policies should be saying, you know. That, that's the county saying, we're not gonna accept that risk. But if you want to, we'll make it reasonable for us by saying. Here's these deed restrictions and then you're responsible for paying for the removal and, you know. Getting that done when it gets to a certain point, and so. So that's the county managing their risk by putting it on.
Yeah, so that's what I was thinking is if, if we're talking about unreasonable risks for communities. That entity can define that. I don't think you wanna carry that on to your private property.
I guess my, my point is that if there's, if there's inherent riskiness developing. Any amount of property on a very dynamic coastline. It seems like a bit of overreach then to to stipulate the extent to which that can be done or how it's done. Like you just. Risk.
The county basically says anything, so the slope is more than twenty percent of that risk. And you will go ahead and. You're gonna build, you need to add a good course. It's site specific, but I mean, that's. Must even change that all the time, that's.
Yeah, it's something like that, and and it's also, you know, um. To protect the, the jurisdiction from lawsuits as well, where the landlord has to acknowledge that they're taking on that risk. And that they're not gonna blame, blame the jurisdiction for letting them build.
Yeah. It's interesting one. Yeah, because it. The opportunity for new development is pretty limited. Um, lots of the city. Yeah, but we've got the existing development, and so how do you? Tell somebody the house they've got already is at risk, I guess you, the ownership change, right, is when you get someone to. Know the opportunity to.
Exposure certainly would be a good time, um, you know, anytime someone does a building permit. Maybe even if it's repairing maintenance, she's still sun acknowledging that.
Anything else? Would it be helpful to? Send the rest of our stuff onward to Trevor and then have it come back or? I mean, because I have, I think, notes on virtually every page. As I think most of us do, looking at, as people are flipping through.
Yeah, I mean, we can keep going. I don't know, but, but, or we could just send them via email.
That, that's what I'm thinking, yeah, should, is it?
Yeah, and just send them directly to me.
Okay, yeah, not so we don't brownact ourselves, yeah. Okay, does that work for everybody? And then we'll see this again.
Yeah, I might, you know, it might not be next month. I think I, I need to spend some, some time working on it.
So I get two months?
Could you, is there a software line? So situation works best for me, yeah.
I didn't know it got.
Uh.
When, yeah, when might?
End of the month?
But to get the stuff to you?
Yeah. I'll give it one two weeks longer.
What? We get energy, yeah, wait. It's the fifteenth. After, alright, it's.
End of the month?
To be clear, we're talking about January, right? Okay, alright, alright, so we're on the same page. Alright, so get your edits on this one to Trevor by the end of the month. Um, alright, let's move on to agenda item number two then. Which, excuse me, three, we just did two, let's not go back in time. Uh, the OWTS ordinance update, and then we'll start Trevor with your staff report. And I'll note that former Commissioner Hopkins is exiting the building. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Alright, so this sort of has come up, um. Two-fold, the. Um, original impetus is that, um, you know, we've been talking about ADUs, um. For quite a while, I'm trying to develop an ADU ordinance and, um. The, the county recently. Um, reinterpreted their regulations and I, um. We, we did get a letter here that makes a big point, so we wanna address a few things in there, um. But so we wanna look at ADUs and second units and. Subject requirements, so looking at OWTS ordinance and. Since we're opening that up anyway, now we could, we could require something specific in the ADU ordinance, but, um. HCD frowns on, on that, they, they don't want things very specific to, to ADUs. Um, but also, you know, this ordinance. It's actually the, the first project that I started working on for Trinidad in two thousand and one, um. Adopted in two thousand and eight and, and just amended to reorganize it into twenty ten, so. And, and we're just now kind of implemented it throughout the entire city, so. Um, you know, we still have a few holdouts, we still have a few. Few issues to address, um, but now that. We've kind of implemented this, it seems like, I know there's some things in there that I've noticed that I think. We should change, and so I thought it might be a good opportunity since we have to revise the ordinance anyway. To kind of look and. Get a take on your experience with the OWTS permit program and, and just get any other input for, for amending. But ETS work, so, um. And then specifically in terms of the residential sizing, um, the. The county, they previously required, um, a minimum of two bedrooms flow, um. Per residence, and they recently changed their, um. Requirement so that it's just a minimum two bedroom flow for a residential system, no matter. How many residences are on it, so, um, it. Made a difference, so say you have two one bedroom. Units, previously the county would have said you need a minimum four bedroom system. Um, um, now two. And so, you know, I, I think, I thought that the. Two per unit might be a little overkill, but I'm not sure that, um. The, the change in. This interpretation was really politically motivated, not scientifically motivated, so I, I do wanna point that out. And, and the idea was to allow more, more ADUs, um, and I think. You know, the, the concern is not so much on an individual lot, you know, parcel by parcel basis so much, but. Just the density of suburbs and in Trinidad in general, I think is a little bit different and, and a somewhat unique situation, that's not. Um. That doesn't apply to, to the entire county, um, and I have been talking to county staff about this issue. Um, they are, um, starting a process to review their regulations and they are gonna revisit this, this as well, this, this topic. So it might become a moot point eventually, but I have a feeling they're gonna take a while with, with their regulations, um. You know, the, um. One of the things they wanna do is add a definition of bedroom. Talking to staff, they, they like the approach that's in here, where it provides, um. Quite a bit of flexibility, I, I think, for having various offices, dens, things that aren't counting as bedrooms. But, but does put a, you know. Limit on it that is, you know, that we can draw the lines. So I think that, that's the idea with this, um. To have, to have a definition for bedrooms, um. So I provided two sample definitions that I think. Are, are similar in, in terms of what the end result would be. Um, and then the other thing that I added, um. Is it, because the, the thing in Trinidad is we have a lot of big, big houses with very few bedrooms, um. So that, that's kind of the concern, um. And then also for sizing requirements, um, so I did sort of a middle ground where the, the first unit. Um, first residential unit has to be sized for at least two bedrooms, but then additional units don't have to have that, so that is that middle ground. Um, between what, what the county did require and what they require now. Um, I have also suggested the possibility of maybe based on size, so. I think it's good to have a definition of bedroom, so we can. You know, we can use it if we need it, but trying to, especially for existing houses, trying to. You know, does it need a definition of, of this, you know, does it really meet that definition? It would be difficult when we acquire a. You know, probably an inspection by the building official. So, um, another way would just be based on the size of the house, and that's a lot easier to, to implement, so. A house of a certain size kind of has a minimum bedroom. Flow requirement for the septic system, so I've suggested that, um. Yeah, and ag- again, in terms of, um. The, the public comment we received, I think, like I said, it's, it's sort of a, an overall, you know, the county requires an acre for, for the use of a septic system. So considering density in, in Trinidad, that, that's pretty significant overall, um. You know, water quality has improved, um, but there's still bacterial contamination in. Surface waters in, in and around Trinidad. We don't know definitively that it's from septic systems, um. And then the other issue is, you know, it's been suggested that, um. The water going into the bluff from the closely spaced septic systems is affecting bluff stability. We don't know that, but we can't definitively say that's not the case, so. You know, we're, we're hoping to, um, use the city's round water, water model and, and take a closer look at that, but. But I think a conservative approach, um, is, is appropriate, um, at this time. Letter mentioned septic, septic tank sizes, and I did include a, you can use a. An undersized tank that's existing, because, you know, tanks can be pumped out, it's really the, the leach field size that I think is the. The biggest concern, so, um, anyway, so I think it, so this would apply to both. Um, you know, single family residences as well as, um, ADUs in particular. So just wanted to. To get the planning commissions input, we've talked about this a, a little bit, um, in the past, and.
Questions of the commission to Trevor.
So. What basically is, is the issue here? Um. Managing systems, which is kind of unique there, right? You're evaluating existing systems on a. Semi regular basis.
Yeah, so the city's OWTS program, um, it, it essentially relies on the county's regulations for insulation and design of septic systems. But then it adds another layer where everybody has to have an operating permit. And, um, you have to get your, your system inspected periodically, um, to have an operating permit, and then. Um, at the time of, um, improvements or property transfers, um, that we. Could require upgrades to those systems, so it adds that layer.
Right, so you're, you're, you're protecting from the biggest issue with onsite septic, which is. You know, contamination of the local area. Which is a, has nothing to do with septic tanks, it has to do with failed leach fields.
Yes.
So you're already. Have a way of checking out. A potential failing leach field. Because otherwise, you know, a lot of times people. You know, notice the problem or they notice the problem, but. It's not a big enough problem that.
Well, I think Trinidad soils are so sandy, things aren't likely to back up, um.
Well, this, this is true, so, so in, in that case. It seems like you've already. You know, done more than most communities were. Dealing with onsite septic, even though it's very dense in Trinidad.
Um. Yes, to so, yes, to some degree, um, but I think. You know, it does follow the state's OWTS guidelines for areas where waters are impaired. Um, you know, water quality has improved in, in Trinidad, but we do stop contamination. There are quite a few states that, that do require. Reimbursement and things like.
And of course Trinidad is one of the few areas where you don't need replacement. Areas designated, right?
We do, yeah, you do have to have a reserve.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It needs to be, you'd have to have a reserve and then.
Yeah.
You know, you'd have to have basically three times the size of a leach field.
So I think, you know, I think we. We have a lot of undersized systems and they can get operating permits, um, you know, we. We do get a lot of leaking tanks or roots and tanks and things, so that's, that's where the tank might be contributing wastewater. Um, or things that aren't really tanks, um. But you don't have to upgrade the system until you sell the property and prove it. The, this is really more if you're gonna add a second unit, which is a second kitchen or a second family. How, you know, what do you have to do with your? It's, so those are sort of the two questions. One, looking at the overall program and the ordinance, but also specific to ADUs and second, second.
Where to get an ADU, you have to expand the leach field or something, and it's impossible and you can't do it.
That's gonna be correct, yes. For, for some properties, not all. And I think, you know, I think we can, you know, I suggested making exceptions for JADs, which are very small. Units, let's not open your square feet, they don't have a full kitchen, you know, because that's not, that wouldn't be more than one or two. So there'd be an exception for that. But yes, it would impact. People's ability to have a, an ADU.
Because in my mind, and this is just a philosophical thing I want to say at once, is. You have relatively dense systems. Regardless of how many houses, you've got a lot of systems in a small area, that's, that's printed in if you want to place. So the main issue is, if you're contaminating the water around there, um. In my mind, talking about adding additional effluent by a. By adding another section to a leach field or, or movement in some place. And then tying that to bluff to building is. It's ridiculous, okay, first of all, because. So much of the water that comes out of the base is rainfall and soaks into the ground.
I, I agree, I'm just saying, I mean, the, you know, the, the ancestral society has called for more program on all development for that. Well, so I, I'm just saying, it's a, it's an issue that we don't have an answer.
So it does, it does seem like if the focus is on. Potentially contaminating the, the area around, you know, systems. That's, that should be. The area around, you know, systems, that's, that should be focused. Ever this guidelines never be.
But I think that's where, you know, making, because a lot of systems, um, you know, are undersized, so um.
So there you go, so maybe if it's already undersized, take a hard look at.
Yeah, and and the the county did, um, I did use twenty seventeen as kind of a a cutoff for. Um, you know, having maybe doing a new evaluation, because twenty seventeen is when they change those regulations.
And if and if somebody has. An oversized system, but they do have a reserve area already, then it shouldn't be that big of a deal. To let them use maybe some of the reserve area, make the existing system more efficient and less risky.
Maybe.
But and and the other thing, I think, at least from my mind, which is more is is important, is that. The way in which we set up the permitting process eh, is that each system will have a different. Uh, period of time between evaluations. For example, a, you know, top-notch, fully-up system may require. The evaluation maybe only every five years, whereas a uh, undersized or a uh, underperforming system. Permit requires it to be evaluated, say, every two to three years.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that that's what's in here, right? Pretty much so, I thought, maybe, hopefully.
Yes, um, yeah, so in terms of the um, permit program, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, right, right. So what we're, I think what we're trying to do is just make sure that whatever system is there, within reason. Is is functioning to its highest capability, even though it may not be the state of the art. But we're still managing it as best as we can.
But there would be, there is the added addition where. If you're gonna create an ADU, you might have to upgrade your system.
Well, e- exactly, yeah, I was just, I was just referring to the the basic. Right now.
Yes. Yes, uh, yeah, we, in general, um, people, if as long as their system is functioning. Continue to use it until they sell. Or improve the house and the. We consider it an improvement.
To go, we like to approach it, it's you have the ability to require inspections.
But we wanna make sure that it's sized appropriately, that it's gonna provide adequate treatment.
Right, so a lot of the existing ones are are, we already know are undersized, you're not making them, make them bigger unless they start to fail.
But if you're adding an ADU, you're gonna increase water use and. Kitchen waste.
So that should, that would kick in the evaluation.
Yeah, yeah.
Then it gets size specific.
Yes.
Or systems, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that covers it.
And that's in here already, right?
Um, for sizing, um, for AD, so. No, I, you know. Cause that, for ADUs, no, um. For permitting ADUs, no, because the the county changed their interpretation. So they would allow an old undersized system to create an ADU, cart, you know, or duplex or whatever, cart the house in half. Without any improvements to the septic system. Again, that was a political decision, not a science decision, and so that's where the concern comes in.
And that's, as as long as there's no net change in number of bedrooms, or regardless of.
As long as there's no net change in the number of bedrooms.
Something we briefly, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Something that we we briefly mentioned, I think, especially Tom, uh. Was emphasizing this during our last discussion of this topic was that we don't actually know the extent to which. Any groundwater contamination is happening, despite there being sampling wells scattered around towns, we might be talking about theoretical problem that doesn't actually exist. That's one point, the other one is that maybe somewhere in the ordinance. Groundache inspection of groundwater. Should be inserted someplace.
Well, we do have, um, there are some stipulations where a city could require groundwater monitoring wells. On a marginal system, something like that, but that's, that gets, that can get kind of onerous. Um, but I would say that. I mean, we, there are regular beach closures for bacterial contamination, um, where the county monitors. And, you know, when we were doing water quality sampling, um. We would get results that are a hundred times what's considered safe. So there's not, there's an issue.
And no, wait, we've we've argued about this over the years.
Now, whether it's.
Because they're not testing for human source.
They are, they are, and they're, they actually have not gotten as many human hits, and I find that very interesting, but. You know, there's other evidence in terms of the watersheds that have the densest. Element and the oldest systems are also the watersheds that have the worst water quality. Um, but maybe it's because they have more dogs and the dogs are.
Do we have that data for Trinidad, or is it just a general conceptual?
Uh, we have it for for Trinidad and the creeks up and down, up and down West Haven.
And when was that data last collected?
The city has not collected data in quite some time, probably two thousand eleven.
So there've been a lot of continued improvements to permitting and processing and. You know, you, I guess where I'm headed with this is that the problem, I guess, to your point, might be theoretical at this point, maybe. You know, the 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 concerns that were there before about the discharge of DAFBS and all that kind of stuff around here that kind of got us into our septic mess, right? And the city might not be here anymore, is it maybe time to get some fresh data, water sampling? The cost, I agree, I I don't know.
But I mean, that's the thing, so are you gonna put that on the city for the city to pay for and? You know, I'm not sure. That's the, you know, I'm not sure that's something the city can or should take.
I guess to me, the. The discussion about the city's groundwater quality, et cetera, is is kind of irrelevant. My opinion to this. Because septic systems have been engineered and designed and studied by. Engineers and scientists for however long that they've been in existence, and we have, there are standards that exist because. Those standards have proven to be effective in treating effluent, and so if we want. We just should, we should strive to meet those standards, in my, I think, I mean, it's. And like, whether or not having a marginal system is actually creating a problem with Trinidad. Discussion that we could have, but I think, you know, I think we all want our neighbors to not be shit in the yard. And.
Pick yourself.
I I guess, I don't know, that's just my take on it, so it's like, we should try to strive to create a system that. Or a policy, I guess, that. Can get us as close to everyone having a properly sized system, given the number of. Bedrooms or people that are living in those houses. And as you discuss in here, there's like so many different ways to slice that up, determine. How much a bedroom, all of that, but. And ideally, a a simpler solution, in my opinion, um, is best to not get convoluted, but um. And I think we're lucky that in Trinidad, most households don't have that many people living. So there's, we do have a way there.
I totally agree with you, you you don't have a a growing population. You know, it's more the number of people in the community, you have a static condition, you know. Got the same number of people, pretty much have for decades, and they had existing systems. That the effluent goes straight down, you know, there's no shallow groundwater anywhere, and also. Putting in monitor wells, trying to. Connect that to an individual system or a or a small admission to the community is is pointless. I mean, if you're gonna be monitoring groundwater, you're you're monitoring the groundwater for everybody within, you know, two hundred feet of you in every direction. It's all collective, it's all moving toward the ocean. Who knows the delay time between, you know, this, this call it effluent, this fluid. Getting from its source to some spring on the beach, it could be decades. But the bottom line is, you're not gonna change, you're not gonna change the the water flowing out of the bay, but. You know, having a new septic system in here or there or taking one out. I mean, I think, yeah, getting involved in testing groundwater is, it's ridiculously expensive with. No firm conclusions ever gonna come from. I would, I would never tie that to a, somebody has to increase their leach field because of. Put a new bedroom on a house or put in an ADU.
Um, mo- I mean, most jurisdictions, well, all jurisdictions, I've seen, require additional. They the, they size the septic system based on the estimated flow, and that is. When you increase the number of bedrooms, you're increasing the estimated flow, so you have to increase the design. When you're adding an ADU, you're increasing the potential flow, so you have to increase the design, so that's that's standard across, yeah, across the board.
Standard, even even though that one additional, you know, bedroom here or there, is gonna have no cumulative effect as you would have a bedroom.
Well, I, you know, I think bedrooms is, now, may- maybe bedrooms is. Is a lesser issue, but I think, um, you know, ADUs are gonna, will increase house size by definition.
Yeah, exactly, so you you pu- put in a new, a new unit, it's gonna have another person in it, their family. Or or effluent.
I guess to just simplify it, I guess my question. If if I were to add a bedroom to my home. That's gonna trigger a reevaluation of my system, right?
That's correct.
Are we suggesting anything more onerous for an ADU than would be required of adding a bedroom?
I think the problem is, is like, people like to call different things that might be bedrooms, other things.
Sure.
And so there's, it can get wishy-washy, so.
If you, if you have a two-bedroom house, and you have a two-bedroom system, and you wanna divide your house into two one-bedroom units, is that system big enough?
Are you adding more people?
Probably.
Well, well, and that's the limitation of bedrooms, if you have bunk beds and have four people living in a bedroom. You know, I mean, obviously, your your intensity of use is gonna be far greater than, you know, uh.
True, and there, I mean, there's no.
Living in a four-bedroom home just themselves.
There's no restriction of people sleeping in. I mean, it's, it's not illegal, certainly, so, yeah, I mean, you could certainly crowd people into a house and and reuse your septic system. I think the other thing with the ADU that's beyond just the bedroom consideration is is the kitchen, because the kitchen. Two families cooking, um, tends to produce higher strength wastewater. That's gonna tear us.
And more washing machines.
More washing machines, yeah.
So I kind of lost the thread here. Um, sorry, I I I, maybe it's me.
No.
But what I understood, what we were trying to do is for the ADU ordinance was to include information regarding bedrooms. I don't see that anywhere, where is it?
Well, I didn't put it in the ADU ordinance.
That's what I'm trying to get at, so you're saying that 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 the intent is to keep the ADU ordinance clean. With respect to the number of bedrooms.
That's correct, that we don't want to.
I'm sorry, not the ADU, the OWTS ordinance, you don't wanna have.
No, that's where I would put it, that's where.
Where is it?
Okay, so it's in staff report.
Yeah, I got that, but I don't see where the changes were made in the ordinance.
I didn't add it to the ordinance because I wanted you to look at the language and kind of, so on packet page seventy-three. To. Seventy-six is a definition of a potential def- because the OWTS ordinance has a definition of bedrooms that's. Would throw, you know, everybody off, it includes every room as a bed would be counted as a bedroom. So it's not a good definition of bedroom that's in there currently, so this, these ones actually relax, and it's not one we use, really. Um, so I'm proposing, I've provided a couple of examples of potential new bedroom definitions. And then, um, and I I don't know exactly where I would put this in the ordinance, um, for sizing requirements. I would, in the OWTS order ordinance, it would probably go. Um, probably around thirteen, twelve, one-ten, so that's the, that's adopting the county's sewage disposal regulations. Um, are basically saying those are what's gonna apply in Trinidad, and then I'd probably put it in there because this would be in addition to that.
Well, that's what was confusing to me, is I I. I was trying to find that in here, and I didn't realize you hadn't put it in yet, okay. Um. O- okay, so it really boils down to, do we wanna select a definition of a bedroom? Is that what you're asking for us tonight?
Yeah, and, um, you know, how do you wanna approach the. Uh, like, and like I said, I think these two, and and maybe you just say that that's a fine definition. I think basically those two definitions that are proposed basically result in the same. Will have the same end result, it's just they're written very differently, so, you know.
Right, right.
Think it's more, it's more clear, um, and then, you know, in terms of ADUs. Do you wanna do something different than what the county is requiring?
So that that's what I get, that's where a little bit of the confusion comes, because I thought what we were trying to do. Was to kind of rely on the county's rules. And it would seem to me that the county's rules have to include ADUs as part of the evaluation process.
So they do, but so they, but they recently, they didn't change their regulations, they changed their interpretation of their regulations. And it was a political decision, not a science-based decision, and that's where the concern comes.
And what was their change, can you?
So their their regulations say residential septic systems will be sized for a minimum. Three hundred gallons a day, which is two bedrooms of flow. And they used to interpret that to mean for every residence, which I thought was overkill, and I've talked to them. I have talked about to them about reducing that requirement, because that would have eliminated anybody from being able to put an ADU. Um, but they changed it to say, just a residential system, regardless of how many residences are attached to it, has to have a minimum three-bedroom flow. So that means you could have. Two one-bedroom dwellings on one two-bedroom septic system.
What would be the concern with that? How is that different from having a two-bedroom? Just the the additional kitchen?
Additional kitchen and like the additional.
Okay.
Yeah.
And again, I'm still trying to figure out how that impacts our OWTS, um, ordinance. Cause if that's a county, county rule or county regulation, the way I understand the way we've set up the OWTS. Ordinance.
Yes.
Is that it just basically says, referred back to the DEA, DEH, uh, requirements. And there's only one small section on ADUs, and it's only about illegal uh, ADUs primarily.
Yeah, so that's correct, so, I mean, I I might have. You know, originally, I thought I was gonna put this in the ADU ordinance, um, but one, you know, sort of looking at, um. You know, number of bedrooms, definition of bedroom, um, size of residences, it might make more sense to. Not just have the sizing requirements, just. not just have the sizing requirements just for ADUs plus HCD doesn't like things that are, you know, just for ADUs um, and not, um, other types of residences. So, um, it would make sense to say we're, you know, we're using the county's regulations except, and this would be in addition to that. And the ca- I've talked to county staff and they're totally fine with that. And, and like I said, in fact, they are, they are currently working on revising their regulations and it's likely they're going to end up with something more like this. But do we want to wait for that?
There's no reason that somebody can't do something that they think is more appropriate. In the county's change, that is concentration of septic systems in, in this main city area of Trinidad. That's not typical of the county.
It's not typical of the county. Yes. And that's why, to me, it raised concerns.
Yeah. I, I, I support that idea. I, I don't support the idea of looking at the size of a dwelling. I mean, the thing about bedrooms has been in practice for a long, long time and it's an average. Everybody knows that, that you don't have the same number of people in each bedroom, but it sort of averages out and it's worked. So I wouldn't get into messing around with that.
And, and that's fine. It's just, um, you know, we have, in, in Trinidad, we have a lot of very large houses, very few bedrooms.
Yeah, it's been fine.
And, and so the county doesn't have a definition of bedrooms, so they just rely on whatever someone says is a definition of a bedroom. But most jurisdictions have a definition of that.
Well, they include a, don't they include a room where if it's got a closet in it, then it.
No, I mean, some, some jurisdictions, yes, that would be a, a requirement, but the, in terms of building code, um.
So you're stuck, you're stuck with the bedroom.
And so, you know, and, and to me, s- you know, someone, should they have to put built-in shelving in a closet to follow around an office? And I, I think these definite, the, the, these definitions actually provide quite a bit of flexibility for someone to say, I'm going to designate this as an office, but also set some boundaries where the city can say, no, that's going too far. And then the sizing thing is, I don't want the building inspector to have to go into an existing, you know, three thousand square foot house and start measuring doorways and walls to determine whether that, you know, you know, let's just say it'd be some size. That, that, that was the idea of the, the size.
The owner's system isn't good enough.
Maybe.
How many, how many times are, are people going to violate this whole thing and sneak into a bedroom?
I, you know, I don't know. I mean, you know, you guys made good points about, um, the household size in Trinidad being relatively small, but you know, there, there are exceptions.
I think people actually violate it pretty.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the impact, you know, when they violate it? I mean, is it measurable?
Well, we can't measure it.
That's right. You can't measure it, you know.
I guess I'm, I'm struggling with understanding the actual risk or for lack of a better word, exposure, um, particularly comes to ADUs. I mean, somebody proposing a brand-new ADU is going to trigger reevaluation of their existing system to see if they can accommodate, correct? If, if they want to do a brand-new building, right?
Um, well, I mean.
In what circumstance could I come to the city and say, I want to build an ADU right here and not have to have any discussion about my septic system and reevaluation of it?
Just internal remodeling.
I'm talking about a new building. Well, we'll start there with just a, a new building. I'm, I'm going to put a new eight hundred fifty square foot.
Well, um, I mean, that's not super likely in Trinidad. What we have is, you know, we have.
But just, I know it's not likely, but just the theoretical. I just want to, I'm just trying to run some examples through for my brain to kind of really understand.
I mean, potentially, so if someone wanted to build a new building and it's a one-bedroom ADU and they have a three-bedroom or a two-bedroom house, they'd take one bedroom out of their house and designate it to the ADU. And then they, now that doesn't mean their system is not going to be evaluated at all, but they could potentially continue to use that same system.
And the reality is probably would use that bedroom again, too. They would redesign it and that's, unless we're going to have bed checks, you know what I mean? It's, it's kind of, and I, I guess I'm curious, your thoughts are, are max exposure as the, the ordinance is written now for the ADU is thirty-six. We're talking about adding potentially thirty-six and that's it. We're done. Right? Under what we've currently got in our ordinance and the, the current and the proposed one. So how much risk is there really with thirty-six, you know, you know? And I know we can't quantify that, but it's, is the juice worth the squeeze here to a certain extent? And I, I don't, I don't think we'll know one way or the other for decades to come.
I mean, it's a significant percentage of cities have actual houses.
The, the, the same thing could happen if all of a sudden everybody in town decided to fill every room in their home to a border. We now have increased the intensity and, and all those, these theoretical issues that we have concern over are intensified and they're on their existing systems, be it a new engineered one or an old pit system either way, you know? I, I don't have an answer. Those are just some thoughts in my head right now that I'm with, I guess, on this issue.
So what do you need from us tonight?
It's a great question.
Well, I was looking for some direction.
Regarding?
Um, well, the ADUs, the OWTS sizing requirements for ADUs and residences, um, as well as just input on the OWTS ordinance, I mean, they're all based on, you know, having, having actually implemented it. If, if you haven't, I mean, that's not, um, I don't think the OWTS ordinance requires planning, mission review, recommendation, I think. I just, since we're looking at OWTS regulations, I thought I'd get your input on, you know, based on your experience with the program or what your neighbors have said there.
You're done, but it just seems like you're, you're adding an ADU, literally adding, of course, since the whole objective in that therefore you should have better evaluate the septic system. ADU has a bedroom, right? So they'll be sleeping there sometimes. So that seems like that would keep simple. That would bring in the size of the structure. It's not common and there's no, no reason, just because you got a big house, small number of people. It, it's always a tendency to put more people there. So why do we, why do we bring that, that into the, uh, the ordinance I have? I'm not familiar with the ordinance, so you can't comment on that.
As we're looking at. Um, on, back to page seventy-one, the second full paragraph. This is just in the, in the fore. She outlines what I think is a pretty simple solution, which, and makes sense to me and like probably is good enough to to meet our needs in Trinidad, which basically is just like, yeah, the primary residence needs at least a two-bedroom. But a BTS, and then if you're going to add ADU on, then you're going to have to get through a three-bedroom, but a BTS for that. Unless you're going to call your primary residence bigger than two bedrooms, then you need an additional bedroom service for your OWTS. But as long as the primary has at least two, and then ADU has, is, is covered with one bedroom, I think, I mean, I really think that would cover us.
I, I.
And I mean, you say that.
I think that's, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I think it's simple. We don't have to go into square footage of houses. I don't really like that part either. I don't, you don't even have to go into definition of bedroom. It's just sort of, like, if the primary has to have at least two and the ADU has to have at least one. That's it. If they want to claim more than that, then it can be bigger, but that's sort of working there. That's, I just like that because it's really simple. It avoids a lot of nitpicky definitions.
Do you, would you make an exception for JADUs that are less than five hundred square feet and don't have a full kitchen?
So, so basically that would be like a two-bedroom house where there's a primary and a JADU stuck in it?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah. That seems like.
And I thought that's the way we had defined it before, that a J, JDU, uh, is, since it's part of the prime, part of the residence.
Yeah, and you have to use a bedroom. So you have, so that's, I would propose that we have an exception for a J eighty.
Right.
Because it doesn't have a full kitchen. It's by definition small and it's by definition built inside the existing residence.
Right.
I think my concern this time around is much as it was last time around, which is that's, you know, no matter how you define a bedroom, as we said last time, the, the biggest offender is the kitchen with its highest strength wastewater. And so I guess my question would be, does does expanding a system to accommodate for additional bedroom, but not necessarily the full new kitchen beat all of the, all of the guidelines and all of the, you know, public expectation that our system should work?
I would say yes. Um, and, and this is, you know, from, from talking with, um, DEH staff. Um, and you know, and that was their, their reasoning for, for requiring the, the two for, for each unit is, is that the kitchen is a concern. But by the time you get to a three-unit syst- three-bedroom system, which then is basically the minimum you'd have to have with an ADU, you're probably, you have plenty of size, um, to accommodate, you know, and an ADU is probably going to be a small household and in the primary house, there probably aren't going to be too many people. You know, so it's, I, I think there's enough of the factors. I, I think it's just really those small, those really small systems. Yeah, once you get to a three-bedroom system, you probably have.
Yeah, and I think, I guess, it's those small systems that maybe I'm jumping to a conclusion that I think people would be most likely to be fudging the numbers on their number of bedrooms on.
Yeah.
And so they're not only like the greatest risk, but also, or like the smallest systems that could be most easily overloaded, but also at greatest risk of people buying, that buying, that. Buying's not the right word. Being dishonest. Because I could, I mean, I know a lot of people that would love to just take their two-bedroom home and just create an ADU and then call that a one-bedroom, then the two-bedroom home becomes a one-bedroom. It's actually still a two-bedroom. That seems like a really likely scenario.
And yes, and I, that's really, that's, that is my main concern is that situation.
Can any of that risk be mitigated with the um, city's permitting process and inspection and pumping? Or does that not really address the raw effluent output?
I, you know, um, in terms of the tank, and I, I did include a provision where your tank can be undersized. I, I'm not as worried about the tank because of the city's inspection program. And yes, you would just have to have it inspected more often. It's, it's.
It's the downstream processor.
Okay.
Legal non-conforming, just since that was kind of the, we'll get to public comment here in a section in a, in a second. I've seen Marilyn's hanging out patiently if she wanted to say anything, but you know, somebody that has something that is currently, you know, on a potentially undersized system where they've got two buildings going in the same system, one's already being rented out in essence as an ADU, the other one might be an STR or primary residence. There's, I was, you know, reviewing the, the legal ADU, you know, non-conforming units, and it sounds like there's a lot of things that we might require. As far as monitoring and might trigger and might, you know.
That's in the OWTS ordinance for the, yeah.
OWTS ADUs, it's, you know, should be subject to increased monitoring and maintenance. Uh, monitoring wells may be installed, modifications may be required, you know, you know, to protect integrity. Yes, I just, you know, new, new, new stuff, new ADUs, I think it'd be pretty easy for us to, you know, I don't know if there's anything we can do about existing ones that are out there, whether or not we know about them or discover them or somebody says, hey, I saw Anton sneaking somebody into his shed, you know, in the backyard kind of a thing, you know, before we'd ever get to that point, which I, I don't think we have that kind of.
Yeah, that was, um, that was one of the things in the OWTS ordinance I would like to take a closer look at, as I, I think that's probably not, not really necessary. Um, you know, Maryland's situation is that it's not approved as a second unit, clear from history. So it's a D, it's a, it's one, see, and this is where, you know, we have a lot of detached bedrooms that would very easily be converted into ADUs. Without, you know, like Tristan said, you know, affecting the size of that house and is, is a house really going to be used as one bedroom? Maybe. Um, you know, in that case, it's, it's an STR and it's, it's regulated. Um, I think because of the small size of the lot, it can still, you know, but most AD, most STRs can have two people per bedroom plus two people. I think that lot maybe isn't big enough for that.
So what's your final product here? And then A, ADU ordinance and an upgrade to the OWTS, that was the thing?
Yeah, I guess, um, the ADU ordinance prompted this. Um, and if I have to amend the OWTS ordinance anyway, maybe you want to take a broad, I, I just, I figured I might as well take a broader look at it. And while, so while I'm at it, I thought I'd ask you guys. Sorry, sorry if I sort of just added to the confusion of it, but I just thought I might as well get your input on that if you have any. It's not a, it's not a planning ordinance. It's not a land assortment. So it, it's outside your, your normal realm. I was just thinking most of you have, have now had experience with the operating permit program. Got any input?
None of the narrative here we're analyzing and talking about, none of that's going to show up in these documents.
Uh, like in my staff report?
Yeah.
No. But like I said, you know, the OWTS ordinance has a definition of bedroom that would throw a lot of places for a loop, um, because it would define a lot of things in bedrooms that aren't currently a bedroom. So I think we need, you know, have a. And it's not in the ordinance. It's, I, I sent you a link. It's in appendix A or.
That's what's so confusing. You're talking about definitions. There's no definitions up here.
I should have, that, I should have at least copied that definition into the staff.
And there is an appendix to the, uh, OWTS?
Yeah. Like I said, it was an early ordinance. There's a lot of things that are a little odd about the organization, how it's written, but like it hasn't. Yeah, so it has, the definitions are in appendix, which, um, should be in the ordinance, the one. And then it has guidelines, which that, that's fine. But that's sort of, that's where it has some of the calculations for how we determine the inspection schedule. Guidance for, you know, when, you know, when you get a building permit, at what point do you have to have your system evaluated, you know, so ten percent value or? Ten percent value.
Where would I find that on site?
Um, you'd have to use the direct links, the O W T S page on the city's website has not been working. But I put the links in the staff report, so you could go.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, that's good thought. Yeah, thank you.
But you can find them on the download. If you go to the downloadable documents page and you search for O W T S, that's another way.
Okay.
While we pull that up, do you want to take a break and open for public comments? We've had a lot of discussion at our level and. Do you see that Maryland is is here patiently waiting? Maryland, I I see you're on the Zoom call. If you if you'd like to speak, we're opening up to public comment now on this this issue.
Um, I submitted written comments, which I was told you all had. I think I I don't know if you've all had an opportunity to read that or not. Um, my written comments, but I would. I don't need to repeat myself. So maybe I should give people a chance to read it if they haven't and then then make a couple of comments after your break. But I don't need to repeat what I said.
I'd say if you have comments regarding, you know, what we've been talking about and anything you want to elaborate on in your in your uh your written comment, now would be a great time. To do that would be appropriate.
Okay, um, I will just, um. To be clear, as I said in my written comments, I have a one bedroom house and a one bedroom legally permitted cottage. Which is officially a second bedroom. And this was permitted in nineteen ninety four. And at that time, I was told by the planning commission that I would be allowed to have a legally permitted A U D. A D U within a few months when the A D U regulations were finalized, which was over thirty years ago. And that has never happened. So that that is my situation. So I commented on a couple of things. One was, um. Trevor's proposed requirement to increase the size of a septic tank or system. For a one bedroom house contain and a one bedroom A D U. I don't think what she is proposing is what is reasonable or standard, because as I said in my comments. I did contact five other counties and they all told me that what would be required was actually the same or less. Than what is required by the county of Humboldt. So I think what is required by the county of Humboldt at the current time is what is really reasonable and standard. I mean, it's it's beyond what for the five counties required. Um, I'd also like to comment that. While there are a lot of septics in a small area in Trinidad, it's not considered to be an extremely dense. Use of septics by the Humboldt County, um, who did designate certain communities in Humboldt as having a high. Um, septic density and that being a concern. Trinidad is not a concern for that, um, according to the county. And I'd also like to mention that um there is a really low density of of septic. Septic systems to Capita, or perhaps I have that backwards in Trinidad, because um. There's actually zero point eight residences per Capita in Trinidad, which is, um, you know, very, very low. Low use of the septic. So there really is not much concern here about. People cramming lots of people into into properties and and overdoing the septics. Um, and then I will also mention again what I wrote in my report that. The state has found that uh there is not a problem with human fecal contamination in Trinidad Beach. And they had thought maybe there was, but this was eliminated as a concern.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we we all have your comments here. Um, I know I was able to read them as well as a couple of other commissioners and. You know, our our responses are limited. I'll I'll let Trevor speak in just a second, but I do just want to uh make a comment that, um. I guess maybe I'm misinterpreting with the tone in 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 kind of what you have, is it. Or there's an implication perhaps stated or not stated that there's there's a desire to limit the ability to have A D Us within the city of Trinidad. And speaking for myself, and and I believe based off discussions at the planning commission level. We think A D Us are a valuable resource and that there's definitely a need to provide more affordable housing. And there's been a lot of discussion on ways to try and make that happen. So I just wanted to assure you of that. And 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 again, maybe I'm misinterpreting what was here and um Trevor, I don't know if you have any specific. To Maryland.
Yeah, you know, I think, um. I I've tried to address some of the comments as as I. We went along in the discussion, um. But yeah, I mean, we're we're trying to adopt a a N A D U ordinance that that meets the state requirements. And also meets coastal commission requirements, um, you know, water use, septic are all um con- concerns with with A D Us. And and in Trinidad general. So we're we're just trying to make sure that. You know, it's uh probably in most situations it'd be fine, but you do have some very small systems. Pits and and other things. So we just want to make sure that, um. You know, not exacerbating an issue.
Yeah, I I understand that and my, um. You know, I do feel like. I I do have to say, I do feel like there has been an attempt to limit A D Us and to prevent me in particular. From having one when I do have an adequate system, I have a legally permitted. Um, construction legally permitted tank, um. Get my inspections, you know, qualify under, um. The requirements of most of of the health departments that I've inquired. And, um, so in the past, when I have been denied for making an A D U. When the only adjustment to my property was to put in a one burner stove. And did not require any additional plumbing whatsoever, it did feel like there was, um. A deliberate attempt to avoid uh permitting A D Os. So that that is where that that is coming from.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that and and we definitely have heard what what you've said on that, so.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for for your time and and listening to this. And and I do really, yeah, I do really appreciate, um, the effort that Trinidad has made to. Um, really address the septic issue and inspect septics and, you know, I think that uh the city has done a really terrific job of that.
All right, thank you very much. Um, and there's nobody else in the room, so with that, we'll bring public comment, we'll end that and bring it back to the planning commission. Um, I did find the definition in appendix A. Thank you for pointing that hyperlink. Um, of the bedroom here, I'll just quickly read it, or I guess just to kind of get it in front of everybody. Any space conditioned heated area of a dwelling unit which is seventy square feet and greater in size shall be counted as a bedroom unless it is one of the following. Hall, bathroom, kitchen, living room, maximum one per dwelling unit, dining room. Family room, breakfast nook, pantry, laundry room, closet dressing room, opening of a bedroom, sewing rooms, dens, offices, studios, lofts. Game rooms and other exterior room and any other exterior room seventy square feet and greater in size shall be counted as bedrooms regardless of whether they are entered through a door. Unless the room is otherwise exempted, the O W T S administrator or health officer may grant exceptions if in his or her discretion or in cannot by itself. By its design functions of bedroom.
Are bedrooms, which are a lot of jurisdictions too. What it says.
Mm hmm. Yeah, so it extends offices, studio loft, game rooms shall be counted as a bedroom regardless of whether or not they enter through a door.
And and that's that we haven't done that and that's one.
Unless otherwise exempted, it does provide room to exempt.
Yeah.
Right.
But I think this provides a little bit better than just. She said it's okay.
I don't know if it helps inform anything, but since I found it, I wanted to share that with everybody. Are you looking for any specific direction from us tonight? Because I don't know a person that I'm ready to offer anything, because I'm. Giving personally a lot to think about tonight.
Yes.
I am intrigued by kind of Tristan's proposal.
I, well, that's directions, I think, um.
Sorry, Tristan's recitation of your proposal.
Yeah.
I was just correct.
Um, that's fine. I that's enough direction for me. Um, and if you and I will. When we finalize the A D U ordinance, I will probably revisit this and provide you the language that will go in the O W T S ordinance. Um, but you know, if you don't have any additional comments on the O W T S ordinance, you guys don't have to look at that again.
So I I'd like to just ask a question. Maybe I should, uh, but, um. The A D U ordinance is not officially approved, correct?
That's correct, um. You know, the the city did approve an A D U ordinance at one point, um, and it was not certified by the coastal commission.
That that's what I meant by.
Yeah.
Sorry, I should have to be clear.
Uh, this this current draft that we have now, um, has not been approved by the city. Because, you know, we're trying to avoid that back and forth and try and, you know, I think. I've gotten consensus from coastal commission staff that they would support this current draft. Um, now it's just H H C D that that we have, because they they now have to approve ordinances too.
So. Since we're in this situation. Uh, without a a fully approved ordinance. If someone came to us and said, I want to build an A D U. What we do.
That's a good question. So and and state law. Gosh, that changed, I think, back in. Three sometime ninety eight. Anyway, I think sometime in the nineties, basically the state said. If you don't have an ordinance, you have to use our, um. Criteria. Um, but that those regulations have always said nothing and this will affect the coastal act. And because the city's ordinance has been certified by the coastal commission. In in effect implements the coastal act and our L C, our current L C P prohibits A D. Essentially.
That's what I was getting at. So so we're really in kind of this this situation where, uh, well, just as Marilyn has pointed out. She can't get authorization for an A D U because. Of just what you said. Okay, thank you. I think I understand.
Very understandably frustrating. You have to get a lease permit, I guess, to.
Uh, so in the. S R zone that you can have an A D U with a use permit, but. I think you have to have double size lot. And then in in the U R zone, you can have a guest house or servants quarters, whatever that means. Um, but again, you have to have a double size lot, so at least sixteen thousand square feet.
I just reiterate, having noted some of the other comments about the expense it is and the fact that. Um, standard for standards, and it would be nice to have some baseline of of how effective the. Of the O W T S ordinance has been actually improving what it sought to improve. Yes, if you guys have some data about whether it's been effective compared to a decade ago, it would also be nice if we're gonna have this influx of. A use, which I don't think we're supposed to in any measure before, it'd be nice to know sort of where we are now, so we can see whether. Septic systems are functioning sufficiently to support.
I mean, I think, you know, we could certainly. Show, you know, how many systems have been upgraded as a result of the program, but yeah, in terms of water quality, we haven't done. Much sampling recently. The county's been doing some in Parker Creek because of both Eha and and Hidden Creek. But yeah, we haven't done.
Do the annual inspections, I mean, they obviously get a general sense of the integrity of the leach field. Could that be a way? To also kind of collect this similar data? It's not going to give us.
Oh, it's not going to.
A granular detail of water quality, but at least we know, hey, the systems are functioning. We haven't found failed leach systems in any of the permits that we've just issued. You know.
Well, we have.
But and they've been corrected or.
Corrected, so yeah, I mean, we could certainly show some data in terms of. How many tanks have been resealed and how many pits have been upgraded to leach lines or, you know, how many roots have been. You know, flushed out of leach lines or, you know, whatever, we we could do something like that.
Because to Tristan's point, you know, if we engineer, if we follow the guidelines of the engineering and make sure the system's operating as designed, there should not be. Water quality issue, right, by design.
Right. That's right. Hopefully, but again, you know, the county. Regulations require an A K. For septic system. For a new lot. So we're 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 always going to deal with that density. Why we must of Trinidad has really good source.
Right, is there a willingness to move on to the final agenda? Not only willingness, but a plea. All right, uh, item number four, the A D U ordinance and. I would just. Reload Trevor's report with something I highlighted because I needed it for my brain at this point. This is an informational item only.
Yes, I was just gonna say. So I I just, I know there's been interest in the A D U ordinance, um, you know, a couple of commissioners have asked about. Where that is and so, um. I have not, I I skimmed through these comments, um, but I have not started to dig into them to address them. You know, I so I I basically, I just need to start responding to. To these comments and, you know, I think at some point it would probably make sense for H C D staff. And coastal commission staff and and myself to probably get together and maybe flush out a couple of details, but hopefully. I mean, so some of these are substantive, but I think a lot of them are. You know, they they do these reviews without digging in too deep and like, for example, one of the first comments is the definition of J eighty use. Where I didn't include the kitchen part of their definition, but that's in the J eighty standard. Because that's where it makes sense more than it being in the definition. So will they accept that? I mean, it it weights the same thing.
Right.
I don't, you know, I don't know. So, um, hopefully a lot of their comments were like that. Some of the comments are also. You know, said it's not a coastal issue when it was still something that the coastal commission asked us to include. Um, yeah, I think. Like I said, I think. Or, you know, some things we just need to revise, they were oversights or. Or the law has even changed since we wrote this, it because it changes every year, um. You know, I think probably that that height is probably going to be the one. Issue that is going to be hard as to find.
Yeah, could we double down on that one?
That's that's absolutely obvious.
I mean, I guess I'm, oh, sorry, I don't know if we're done, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's it's about crafting the response. Hopefully getting current from the coastal commission, um. To support that. But they don't, you know, they don't protect private views either, but I think. In terms of character Trinidad.
Questions or comments for Trevor on this one?
I mean, I read through most of, well, half of his response, which seemed very. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, very, very picky.
Extremely picky.
Yeah.
That like to an extent that seems unnecessary, but. Yeah, I guess one of the ones, well, the height one I keyed in on.
Yeah.
And the setback requirements.
But I thought we, you know, some of these I just have to take a look at, maybe it's just a tweak here and there, or maybe they just didn't. Understand how something was written, but.
Yeah, the one he called out at number nineteen of his things. Was about the street side yard, which, I mean, that applies to a corner lot, is that what that is?
Yeah. And I think that, okay, yes, that is not in the state.
That one seems. So you could have a four-foot, but a setback on the street. If it's not your friend.
Alleyways.
But you can only have a four-foot fence.
It goes alleyway to street, right?
Well, you know, and, and that one's one where you might be able to really make a good, um. Public view argument, it, it might be interesting to kind of take a look at some, some corners. And see where public views could, could be impacted on that. But it's, that, you know, that's also. The character, they don't care that much about community character, but it is, it is part of Trinidad's kind of coastal identity and draw. Trinidad is a coastal resource.
It's a conversion ADU, I don't feel like I've heard that term before, he called that out in his. Conversion ADU.
Probably anything that's not new construction, so just conversion of an existing, you know, yes, do you know what?
Yes, his, uh, response number thirteen. One conversion ADU midway through the paragraph. So, one conversion ADU, one, you know.
Yeah, so, and again, some of this stuff, I mean.
We need his definitions of his documents.
Yeah, I think it, yeah, just means converted out of existing space, um, you know, and like in a multifamily unit. You can convert. George closet to an ADU, or something, like you can convert space that's not living space. But again, these are, I mean, those are sort of. It's sort of silly that to muddy up Trinidad's ordinance with stuff like that, we're never gonna have multifamily. Like that, but if that's what they require, we put it in there, and it's not gonna affect anything, because you don't have any buildings that would apply to it.
I guess the, the only way we might is the consideration of expansion. And annexation to places where that's possible, and so we do have the obligation to plan for the future. And not just our existing circumstances, right?
Well, they're still undeveloped.
There are still, yeah, a few parcels.
Parcel's still available, so. Could be differently.
I know you said you had it read through this, Trevor, when you get to number fourteen.
I mean, I've read through, but I haven't, like, dug into them.
Number fourteen is one where he talks about or takes issue with our restriction of JADUs being SDRs. And wouldn't that fall under the definition of a home share, as long as the primary occupant is still in the structure? Because home shares, we have no cap. Isn't that in essence a home share?
I'll have to look at that, that's.
And my first, my, my, you have my question, right, doesn't, wouldn't that just simply be a home share, STR?
A JDU.
A JDU is in the existing structure, right, right now, I can take a bedroom in my home and turn it into a home share STR, right?
We, we talked about this, and you guys said no SDRs. Yeah, we had a whole meeting.
No, and I'm just. It's come up again as a, as a flag, you also just brought it back to my.
I mean, essentially.
Number fourteen.
Yes, I mean, and that's why I thought, well. You know, why not for certain things, but I, well, and, and maybe, and the council took it up too, and they might have. You know, they might have been even more.
On that same thread, number twenty-eight. He says. Does, they're talking about JADUs. And short-term rentals. And he says that it does not, the. Whatever HCD. Does not authorize restrictions on short-term rentals.
And again, that, it's just, it's a situation that's never gonna come up in Trinidad, there's not gonna be a housing authority that. Builds, buys and builds houses in Trinidad. Or a nonprofit that's gonna run that, so I think that's what that's, um.
I guess the part of it that I keyed in on was, it wasn't that the owner must reside in, it's, that, that. Shall not be rented for, well, our code says shall not be rented for terms less than thirty days.
I don't think he, I don't think he is objecting to that, though, so I don't know why he included that as part of the sentence. Uh, and does not, uh, does not authorize restrictions on.
That's specific to JADU, or it's not tanking the entire STR.
Well, and what's also really weird is. There are. So the state law had, okay, it said, if, if the city has an ordinance, it has. These are the sort of maximum standards you can put on. And then it had a separate section. And then. And then there's an, another section that says regardless of the city's ordinance, you can build these. And that includes ADUs and G, it's, it's, it is a very confusing. Set of regulations, and. One of them says may restrict thirty-day rentals, and the other one says shall not restrict to thirty-day rentals. But apparently, the section on just JADUs doesn't include mention of short-term rentals, so. Because it does, I'll, I'll have to look at that again.
The way he wrote it, it's sort of, you know. It's like, does it say, does it say that you can't, or it just doesn't say?
Because in one section, it says you can restrict. Then if it doesn't say anything, then you assume that you can't restrict. But, but there is another section that says you can't restrict, so. It's a horribly written, and I think partly because it's been amended every year for thirty years.
So I guess my concern with this whole best is. How, how, how are we going to, uh, comply with state rules? When essentially, everything he says that we have done is subjective. And he wants everything to be objective. And in most cases, I don't even know how you would do that, without going into huge amounts of detail. Which will just completely complicate the whole idea of, 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 uh, a, a policy for ADUs. I mean, he's talking about, well, you haven't defined a window size, well. Well, you know, what does that mean?
I'll have to take it closer.
Like the price.
Well, but there's some things that say. You might wanna consider doing that, maybe that's, because window size isn't dictated in that state law. I don't think.
Well, I thought I read it, and I'm, I'm, maybe that's a bad example, but I guess my point is that in many cases, he. Concludes that our standards are subjective, and that we have to be more objective. And when I look at some of those standards, to me, that is a huge challenge, and I don't. I don't have a real simple solution on how to do that. And so, um.
It, it might be, I mean, just, uh, the efficiency kitchen is limited to the following. And I define an efficiency kitchen. Well, what's an efficiency, they. They don't define an efficiency kitchen, so why are they saying we can't define one, it's clearly not a kitchen if it's enough, anyway.
Well, let me, let me just use the example I was trying to get to, um, it's twenty-five. And this talks about windows which face adjoining resonance, and the last sentence says, the ordinance does not specify. How a window can be designed to protect the privacy of neighbors, which makes the standard subjective. What am I supposed to do with that?
I mean, does he want something as simple as, as, for example, curtains?
I think he wants it to be, I mean, the whole idea is just like, it needs to be what the state wants, which is like.
But what, what does the state want in that case, what are they asking for?
Oh, they don't care, I mean, this is my. They, they just want people to build an ADU, they don't care if it invaded the neighbor's privacy, whatever. Like, that's something that we want to do, it's, it's a nice touch.
Well, you know, it's, it's kind of interesting. Because I think there's a couple of things like this, where I think the state law. The state law, the, the city was, was trying to actually be less restrictive than state. But by doing so, it introduced some of these subjective kind of things, and I said they don't like it, but it's still less restrictive than state.
So for next steps, I guess you have a conversation with the general HCD that offered this.
I mean, we could just say the entrance to the assessment.
Yeah, I think that other one about entrance facing it.
Which one is that?
Uh, twenty-four. I think.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not, they're like facing the indoor lot means, it's, yeah. I mean, they ultimately face property, that's.
And a lot of this language, I thought, was directly from the state law, so I'll have to take.
Trevor.
Well, I mean, and, and, you know, this is the kind of thing where. And it's gonna be the same with some of the, the coastal protection stuff, is if we can't. Find some sort of common ground and compromise, we'll just keep using our state ordinances that don't allow any ADUs. I mean, that's.
Well, wouldn't, I, yeah.
I don't, I mean, I don't know.
Wouldn't we just get sued by some of the people?
Well, there's something here, right, about. There being a penalty for uncommitted ADUs under one of the state laws. Maybe twenty-five thirty-three prohibits penalties for uncommitted ADUs, establishes special criteria for permitting.
Are you supposed to be responding to these responses?
Yeah. I, we have to. Because we have to get air approval of this ordinance.
As we.
Can you just say? This point is silly, uh, it doesn't matter.
Potentially.
Appenforce was.
Potentially.
You know, I wonder if this is. Intentional or unintentional, you know, designed to. I mean, obviously, the state's concern, I'm assuming, is that they don't want jurisdictions to restrict this. Solution to the housing crisis of ADUs, right, JADUs, and so. Is, is this kind of the process by which the battle of the wills or the wearing down happens? You know, because with a constantly moving metric, I don't know how, even if we were to. Change everything to follow this, it sounds like these rules are changing so frequently, to get this across the finish line with. All the different entities, we have to get to say yes to this. You know, it's not just HCD, it's the Coastal Commission, it's, you know.
I really wish, you know, we had done this five years ago, we would have avoided. By several, the height and the HCD group, but.
Can you just accept the state thing, just say we're doing whatever the state's doing? I mean, is that something that was considered?
Yes, well.
And then let them fight it out.
Well, no, because we have to update our LCP, so our certificate, because it's certified by the Coastal Commission. So the state law doesn't supersede it, now, we could amend our LCP to just refer to the state regulations, yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, maybe I'm being empty-handed here, wouldn't that just save all of this? And let the.
In some ways, the state law is more restrictive, is more restrictive. So there are some things the city is being a little bit more lenient on. Um, but I think, I think one of the primary things is, um. You know, affecting, you know, someone can build a twenty-five-foot-tall ADU with no setbacks and no. No review, and so that really affects the character of Trinidad, so I'm not sure.
Engaged up there with the design review?
No, you cannot require a design review.
But this is the, this is the catch twenty-two, if we just take the state requirements and guidelines and.
Accept just the state guidelines, because the Coastal Commission added a whole bunch of stuff to our ordinance too. Some of which HCD commented on.
Same like you said.
Welcome to the mess, Ron.
And it's, it's, yeah, it's a.
We love to run this through ChatGPT, see the.
Well, I have people comment that they think they have an AI reviewing things.
That's what I'm wondering. This almost sounds like it.
And that's an evil thought.
At this point, I'll, I'll pause our discussion, and again, open it up to public comment, I see that Marilyn is still with us, if you had any. Comments, Marilyn, again, this has mainly just been informational, and just. Rambling at this point.
Yeah, no, no, thank you, I'm just, I'm just listening in, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, okay, so. Across that, uh, that's, it's back to us, as a planning commission, public comment closed. Yeah, a lot of discussion for this informational.
Twenty-seven, where we said a JADU shall be constructed within the wall. And include a bedroom or a primary dwelling unit, so that they don't require CDPs. To make it easier for them, and the state says you can't do that, there's no basis in like, we did that to make it easier. So.
With changing the word shall to can. You both satisfy the state and make it easy for us.
It just gets more complicated, because if they don't include a bedroom, then they require CDP.
Right, well, then if they want, then they can go that route, or, yeah.
So, yeah, we were trying to make it easier for people, but, um, you know.
At that point, the state's adding cost prohibitions to the process, to the process, right? Any further comments at this point on this one, or I think, if you kind of. Right, yeah. Probably asleep by now, it sounds delightful, doesn't it? Um, all right, then with that, agenda item four, commissioner reports, do any. Commissioners have reports from their, your committee assignments, or. I just have a few things to mention, um. The chair, co-chair, and committee assignments, we're gonna put on the agenda for the federal meeting, right, Trevor, now, once we have really seen it, so we can. Please discuss and, and however you want to do that, and, and change is certainly welcome on all fronts there.
You know what the committee, you can help me with what the committee.
Ran down in the office. There was STR, which has been sunsetted, there is water advisory.
Tom was on the.
Are there others? But STR's been. I don't think we're on animal. Welfare, whatever, I forget the animal welfare, whatever that is.
But they just haven't happened yet.
Water advisory may be sunsetting as well. Based off the council discussion last night, that might have run its course. The, the issues might be better addressed at the council level, which. Isn't actually that bad a concept? Only a couple of things I have, just a reminder, if you didn't see it in your city email, the F P C C forms or whatever, electronic one, don't forget to do that, um. Joint uh city council planning commission meeting that was asked by Commissioner Slay, yes, that is something that we're looking at, trying to get on the agenda. The, I know, right, the the beginning of the council calendar year is pretty full, so they're trying to figure when they're going to get that in, but that will. Uh, continue. And then the last thing I have is just a plug for, and I sent this to city staff, to the city manager and the city clerk, is if you are unaware. Of the earthquake grace and bolt program, it is reopened again, uh, right now for that, it's a phenomenal program where the city gives, or the, excuse me, the state gives you. The last, what I did, it was three thousand dollars towards getting it done, we have a contractor in the area that actually is certified to do it, you can do the work yourself. Um, and it.
I did it a couple of years ago, too.
Yeah, I did it, and it was a few hundred dollars more than the cost than what the grant fund is, it's a no brainer for me to do it, but. Uh, the city has that, it's on their website, earthquake grace and bolt is the name of that, or the city hopefully is going to put on the website, so I just wanted to plug that, because I think it's really important. And if you are one of the people who look care at earthquake insurance, it gets you a savings on your premiums as well towards that. Yeah. That's all I have, any other commissioner reports? You go ahead, all right.
I'll just, yeah, please. Uh, I just, um, just mentioned that, um, H C O G is supporting a, um, safe routes to school. Program uh of self assessment, and they've received a fairly large grant, and so it's a public. Participation uh on January twenty second, there's lots of information on the H C O G website. It's interesting because they're going to be doing a lot of work with, uh, uh. Routes safer. Which we went through and still can talk to do, so there's some interesting stuff there. Anyway, they're, uh, like I said, it's on the H C O G website.
Do you know, did they reach out, I would imagine, to all the schools in the area, I would hope Trinidad Elementary has pumped this information out to.
I I I don't, okay, I don't.
Trevor Stafford.
Um, just in terms of the the joint, maybe my suggestion was that, um, you know, the planning commission kind of look at planning priorities for the year, which we sometimes do, especially when things are busy. Um, so I I sort of started a list, and then I think that's good to present to the city council as they're discussing their their next annual budget. Um, so. I will probably get you some on that.
I guarantee you, a question they will ask will be the status of the general plan, where things are, and if we can show something that says. We've done our work, it's now in the hands of these entities and we're waiting for it to come back, I think would be very helpful, you know, planning commission has completed these tasks. It's out in. Bureaucracy land, waiting to come back, so that they at least know then what was left for us would be.
And we have a couple of, uh. Very simple application right here, that just includes in a carport, but it. Technically. Good. The. Rock lines are going to come back with a an addition, um. That has been approved, they've approved an addition on the house before, they're just. That should be pretty straightforward, um, but I do have a application that's not totally complete, um, for. Five units on the property on the other side of Hidden Creek, so that will be, um. I guess.
For the rock wine. Permit, that was.
Here to go.
Years ago, so we have to go through the whole thing again.
And I think it's a different, you know, they're doing some different things.
I recognize the landmark, you mentioned Something Creek, about those.
Hidden Creek, uh, our beef park. So there's one, and it's on the same side of West Haven, just on the other side of Harper Creek, that it's the sort of little thumb that sticks out from the city. They can parcel between West Haven and.
Yes, that could be changed.
It doesn't have soil limitations, um, you know, it's a lot of trees, but it's, I mean, it's three acres, there's some seats in the creek setback, but it's just five. I mean it.
Likely February, more likely March, April.
Oh, yeah, it'll be, it'll be a couple of months, so that's, we have to do sequel after that. Uh, other than that, you know, working on the L C P update, um, you know, concentrating on using up that grant funding. Assessing applications. And following up on a few other things that we did with grants, but we didn't quite get them to the finish line, and then. So I'll include all that kind of stuff in the.
Any changes, future agenda items? And move at this point.
I will include those in the priority list as well, see, we want to break them.
Emphasize.
Signs. Signs have come back full circle.
Yeah, as I was sitting in the council meeting last night, I thought, boy. I know we've been pushing that one off as long as I've been on the planning commission, but.
Well, it went quiet, there's been radio silence on some sites for years, even though that used to be one of our top issues.
You said emphasize annihilation.
Well, and I just got another inquiry, so an inquiry from properties of the north, so I mean, that's a much bigger. But yes, um. Annex, I've been holding off on trying to start, um. Talking about annexation with those water applications till we had a new city manager, I just couldn't get. The momentum to get a staff meeting together to do that. That's definitely on my list.
Can I ask him why? Why you feel like it needs to be addressed?
Well, I just. Look at the economic. Situation for the city. And I look.
These A D U regulations, I, oh. Yeah.
Yeah, that too.
Just keeping up, there's, I don't, I. I've started to realize that years, I just, I don't think Trinidad's sustained, going to be sustainably close currently.
I mean, discussed that past, I'm just wondering if there was some urgency all of a sudden for some reason.
Well, I I said, my urgency is the fact that we have been saying, yeah, yeah, we need to do it for as long as I've lived here. And.
And my urgency is that we have two water applications from outside of the city and Latifah wants us to. Get annexation as part of that.
Yeah, nothing, nothing new per se, but just, uh. Try to keep the puff at least on the summer.
All right, then with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Everybody.